Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Welcome to our special work session that we have today. And we're going to go ahead and get started with our first item. And I know our first item was the property purchase with Stanbach. And I'm looking for Angela. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Board members and public, I want to make sure Angela's coming forward. This information that she's bringing forward to you is for discussion. Again, as we've had someone that would like to offer some property that's over close to the Stanbach area. This area is, Stanbach Middle is growing, and that area is growing. So looking at, do we need to make a purchase for the future of additional property? As we will probably need to look at building another site there in the near future. So Ms. Usher is going to take it over and walk us through this first item.
Thank you, Mrs. Bird. Good morning.
Good morning.
As Ms. Bird said, it's for the acquisition of 42-acre site in Auburndale. So some background information. It is 42 acres. It's about two and a, three miles from the existing Stanbach Middle. And it's located, let me go to the other slide. This is Berkeley, and this is Denton. And we have 1,400 linear feet on this, on Berkeley, and 933 on Denton. It is really a nice property in that it's elevated. It has infrastructure in place, water, sewer, electricity, drainage, all those are already in place. And we can have access from Denton and from Berkeley, which is good. We had two appraisals done per Florida statute. The Wheeler appraisal came in at 126,000 per acre. Mancuso appraisal came in at 78,000 per acre. When the property was presented to us, the realtor was asking 152,000 per acre. And so the seller has agreed to the cost of 102,000 per acre. The sales tax committee on June 11th recommended, voted to recommend to the board the purchase of the subject property. It was not on the sales tax list, so we had to take it to them. As Mrs. Bird said, there are quite a lot of residential development approved in the area, at least 3,500 units. Stanbach is projected to be at 102% of the permanent capacity. But the issue at Stanbach is not just the utilization. It is a real constrained site, 4.7 acres from middle school. It doesn't have any of the amenities a regular middle school has, like the play area, the courts, the track, the football, or the soccer field. It doesn't have any of that. So it's really small, no amenities at all. So besides growth, we need to provide equal amenities to Stanbach Middle, as we do to other middle schools. As you can see, this is it. We have, the city owns this field, and this is for the Auburndale High School campus. But there are no other amenities, but it does have a gym. And with that, that's the reason we think that it's a good offer. Thank you. Questions?
Questions? Ms. Miller?
You said the one appraisal was 78, the other was 120? 120, or 120?
126.
We keep getting appraisals that are so far off. That's very concerning. So we're going at 102 an acre. Have we done business with Mr. Moore or his LLC before?
Not that I recall. And the reason, Mrs. Miller, I went right through the both appraisals entirely, to see what was the difference. These are the comparables that Wheeler used, and these were the ones that Mancuso used.
Are we going to get this, can we get this information?
Yes.
Okay.
If, Mrs. Bird, the PowerPoint, right?
Yes.
But the thing is, what Mancuso did, the zoning is commercial general, the land use is community activity center. Wheeler used the commercial property as the comp. Mancuso split the property, 50% commercial-
Commercial, right.
-and 50% residential. So his comps over here were 59,000 an acre, 60,000. If he had just used commercial to commercial, it would have been close together. But because Mancuso brought in the residential, it really pulled down the cost per acre. So that's the difference. Thank you.
Great question. Mr. Townsend?
As I mentioned before, just for the record, so the public knows, who was the owner, and when was, when did they buy it, and what did they buy it for?
The owner is Michael Moore of Berkeley, Auburndale LLC. And they purchased the property in 2007 for 2.25 million.
And we're going to be buying it for 4.2-
It comes out to like 4.28 million.
Okay.
At the 102,000 per acre.
Quick question. I mean, I guess in looking at this, do we need all 42 acres?
That is what is being offered. The reason, we might not need all the, the entire 42 acres for middle school. Middle school is like 35 acres, 30, 35. But there are other needs we need for support, for other academic programs, so, and they're offering it to us as 42 acre.
So 30 is kind of the standard, 30 to 35 is the standard?
30 to 35 is standard middle school.
And what do we, if we eventually relocate Stanbach there, what happens to the current Stanbach? Does it sort of get absorbed by Auburndale High, or like what's our, what's our plan?
I will bring that back to the board if I get directive to purchase this property. When we look at the five-year capital plan, there are different needs. We have some schools in the area that need relief, the elementary school, like Lake Alfred Elementary, Auburndale Central Elementary. So this will give us some options to use the Stanbach Middle School property. But that will come back when we, since we don't have any capital project in the five-year plan for this property at this time.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't, I mean, not, I don't need a specific plan. I mean, in a general sense, you would use, use that as like a standalone elementary, potentially?
That's possible. It's all based on need, yes.
Mr. Townsend, I think what your question is on where you're going is, will we use the building in the future?
Correct.
Oh, Stanbach, and yes, we would use that building.
Right.
We just don't have it designated.
Right.
With the other schools.
I get it.
Mr. Wilson?
Along those lines, I guess then that means we wouldn't sell that property and recover some of the, some of the costs. No? We have a need for it.
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Miller?
Thanks, sorry, I didn't know who was online. Speaking of Auburndale leadership, we've talked, we discussed what they're, they would like to see happen with relieving Auburndale Central, because there's nowhere to grow that school. Do you have a timeline on any of this, of when this would, this would roll out as far as moving Stanbach?
Ms. Miller, we'll do the projections, and we'll look at our budget, to see where we can put it in the capital plan. And then I'll bring that back to the board. I, at this time, it's not in the five years.
Okay.
But every year we update the capital plan.
Right.
So we'll look to see the monies and all that, to see what we have available, and the projections, the need.
And with Mancuso appraisals, do they usually, is that something they've done in the past, where they pull residential in, or is that because of the usage of how it was zoned?
It's commercial general zoning. But I think they look at the existing land uses, and that's where they pull in the residential.
Developers would buy that up for residential.
Residential, they look at what they, and that's why-
And he'd prefer to sell it for twice as much for commercial. So I was curious if they want that.
Right, they saw, Mancuso split it 50/50.
Okay.
And that's where it pulled down the, the appraise value.
Mr. Townsend?
Has, has the property ever been used frequently before? Is it like a total greenfield?
Greenfield.
So, and, so there's no like concern about mitigation of any kind of, like, I don't know that area that well, but I think there's some industrial uses around, are there, or not?
Well, not, not adjacent, no. We have the commercial at the corner, the gas station.
Okay, okay.
But, what else do I have in? Looking north, and this is looking south.
Okay. So, so we have a pretty good sense that there's nothing we're going to have to do to the-
It is quite high, not in a flood zone. It's level, it's not, so it's, it's a nice property.
Okay. Ms. Wilson?
Ms. Usher, are we going to have to finance this? Are we going to finance this purchase, or do you have the cash to pay for it?
It would be sales tax, and the 4 million would come from that. So it would be an outright purchase.
Okay. But it probably is going to mean we're going to finance something down the road, which is one of my concerns when we did the half-sense sales tax. And so the only thing I would ask is that we be very diligent in seeing if we actually need all that property, or if as we build that out, if we could sell some of the existing property, maybe sell something off to recover some of that cost. If we don't need all of it, seems like a lot of property, but that would be my only concern.
Sell, Mr. Wilson, sell some, a portion of the 42 acre, or sell another property?
Well, either one. What, after you put together a plan, a sound sword, if you said, okay, we've got the 42 acres, that's all we need, we don't need the other site. Or if we said, you know, since we're using the other site, maybe we don't need all 42 acres, maybe we only need 32 acres, for example, whatever it might be, 35 acres, I think you mentioned. So to help, just to help offset some of those costs.
Okay, we could look at that. But I did go through the vacant land inventory to see what we have available, and what uses we plan to put on those. And we really don't have much to sell there, the vacant land.
Okay, so we would need everything we currently have, plus these 42 acres.
And I was looking to see if we have a vacant land in this area, but we do not.
Ms. Miller?
Can I get, can we get a list of vacant land that we own?
Certainly.
And are we currently trying to sell any of it?
No, we're not. We're not selling any of it. We own the H Street.
You can email it to us, it's fine.
Okay, certainly, I'll do that.
I didn't go. Any other questions? So is it the consensus of the board, where they like for us to continue to move forward, we're looking at the purchase of the 42 acres at, I think, was it 102?
Yes.
Per acre?
102 per acre, right.
Ms. Fields?
I guess my question would be, are we going to be continuing to use this strategy that whenever a property becomes available in the area where we think we can benefit from it, we're going to, if the resources are available, we're going to be doing this?
I would recommend that, Mrs. Fields, especially in the Northeast. The Northeast is the rapid-growing area. This one is more of a moderate to rapid. So we still need a high school site, so if any property comes available up there in the Northeast. It depends on location. If an area isn't growing and it's available, and we look at the projections, then no. But otherwise, we look at, especially in the Northeast where we need to put a high school.
The only thing that I would say, I understand that, and I respect that, the only thing that I would say is in the future, it would be possible for us to come with some tentative plan of how we're going to level out the purchase, like Stanbach being possibly replaced with this property.
Right.
And then what's going to happen to Stanbach. I know that you guys are discussing that, you're brainstorming, but it would be good if, when you came with something like this, if you could come with, well, these are our ideals, excuse me, our tentative ideals. Not really sure if we're going to be doing it this way, but this is what we might utilize, the empty space that we're going to be converting to the new property. I hope I'm making sense.
Right, Ms. Fields, we're doing that at staff level, but I have to bring that to cabinet, and I'll bring that to you.
Okay.
So is it the pleasure of the board that we continue with the purchase of the property at, for the Stanbach, the 42 acres? If they can have a show of hands, if we agree, then, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Usher. Okay. The next item that's on the agenda is, is the governor's proposal. I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Bridges at this time. That's the item for him.
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, at the last board meeting, there was discussion about some sort of communication from the school board to the state concerning the governor's proposal for setting the base teacher salary of 47.5. There was originally conversation about using a resolution of the chair's request. I've converted that to a proposed letter that individual board members can send. I have to ask to bring hard copies, and it can be tailored to your individual use. I, as you might expect, I've drafted a, what I suspect is sort of a diplomatic version, and depending on how, how you wish to, to approach that individually, you would be free to make those changes, or I could assist you with those changes. I will distribute the hard copies that I've asked you to bring, and you may have a look at those, and I'll be happy to make any-
It's all Sam?
Any changes, yes, sir. I'll be happy to make any individual changes you like, but those are tailored so that they could be sent from each individual board member.
I think if I recall right, this is, this is related to my, to my request to start with. And, you know, my point in raising it was really to respond to the Florida School Board Association, which issued a statement in support of the 47.5 starting pay plan without really consulting with anybody, the leadership. I think a lot has happened since that happened.
Just a little bit, yeah.
You know, this is, this is fine with me. I, you know, I would, ideally, we'd all say, pay everybody, and not, not employees that don't exist yet. You know, that's, but I, I think that argument is being effectively made, so it's fine.
So if, Ms. President? Yes, thank you. So if anybody's wanting to send the letter, talk to me. How do we do that?
Right, well, first off, you know, it's available in soft copy, so if anybody wants to change it themselves, they're welcome to.
Okay.
Or they can contact me, and I can help make any changes they would like.
Okay.
And then, because, because individual board members may have individual feelings about these particular matters.
Yes, I understand. Okay, so are you sending us all then, a copy of this for us to?
I certainly, I can send it to you soft, if that would be your preferred way of doing.
What is soft?
Soft copy, electronic.
Electronic, thank you.
So you can manipulate yourself.
A Word document that you can-
Or I can make changes for you.
Yeah, could you please do that then?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to request that each board member gets that, so as each person wants to customize the letter for their own use, they can do so.
I'd be happy to.
And if we are sending it out, what is the date by which we should have these?
You can, you can, it can be dated whatever day you actually send it.
Okay. Ms. Miller?
Have we done these in the past? I don't know sending resolutions as a board versus individuals, if it's a different, if it's a different reception.
Well, your resolutions and letters accomplish different things.
Right.
Of course, if it's a resolution, it has to be adopted by majority vote. And, and they, I think the, the issue here was on the, on the politics of the thing. This is, this is more of a political conversation than a legal one. If the board was unanimous in the message that they wished to send, it can be done by resolution, but that would need to be discussed and, and make sure that it is in fact the communication of the board, and not of the individual member. One of, one of the things that, that became apparent is, as we were working through the process of creating this, is that the intent of the press release from FSBA and FADS was not to express approval of the governor's proposal. It was, and this is sort of from the horse's mouth, so to speak, the intent was to say, we would love to have the money, but we would like to have the flexibility to spend it how we would like to. Now let us send our legislative people in to, to do the job with the legislature. But they, they were, the communication that I received from them was, this, this is not an effort to say to the governor, we endorse your plan. It is, thank you for the money, now let us spend it the way it needs to be spent.
So these letters are no more than an individual citizen sending a letter, where a resolution would be an entire board member decision.
Right, you are, you'd be sending them as, as individual board members. And it was interesting that, as of, as of my conversation, there were, this was not something that any, any other board was attempting to address via resolution. They were, they were addressing it legislatively and individually.
Okay. Mr. Townsend?
That's literally the opposite of what their press release said, however.
Yeah, I get it.
You, you, you getting them to say that is pretty effective.
Pretty good.
I, I, so, again, I stand by my, I'm, I'm cool with how this is, this is being done if everybody else is.
Any other comments, Ms. Fields?
I think we got this question about this last time, maybe we can read, and then we do a letter, if my members serve Michael.
Okay.
And as I said, I tend toward the diplomatic, and if there are, if there are other approaches, I can certainly insist in, in making that happen.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. The next item, item three, is about the Best and Brightest Teacher and Principal Award Program. And that will be Ms. Fortney's, and I believe she also has item four, that's going to come right behind it, which is going to be the school calendars.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, as you all know, last year, the legislator, the legislation revised the Best and Brightest Program. They removed several factors, particularly the SAT requirement for teachers to receive that award. So now there are now three rewards, awards, excuse me, three main awards, excluding the principal retention award. And so I just want to discuss those with you, because a part of the new legislation is that the board decides how to provide the instructional personnel recognition award. And so if you look at page two of six of the item that's presented before you in the backup documentation, you'll see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 awards listed there. So I'm just going to break them down into, again, four main areas. So first is the teacher recruitment award. That is for up to $4,000, and that's a one-time bonus for newly hired classroom teachers who qualify as a content expert. The Florida Legislature, Legislature has decided what content, what a content expert is. And so we would like to ask our employees to submit pretty much a application, for lack of a better term, to prove that they are a content expert. Once they prove that, then we will provide them the $4,000. The next is the teacher retention award, and so it's broken down into two areas. One is for highly effective teachers, and the other is for effective teachers. Highly effective teachers for the retention award will receive up to $2,500 for the highly effective rating in 18, 19. And it's for those employees who are employed at a school who has, that has improved an average of three percentage points or more for the determining school grade over the prior three years. The teacher has to be in the second year at the school. Similarly, the other retention award is for effective teachers, and they will receive $1,000 based on that same criteria. And the last one is the instructional personnel recognition award. And pursuant to the statute, the board has to decide what to do here. And so if you look at page four of six, in the information that I provided to you, there's a chart there. And so I just want to go over the numbers with you, if you can. And so Best and Brightest overall, we received $9.8 million. 1.4 million went out to charter schools. We've calculated 3.7 million will go to the retention award, and then 500,000 will go to the other retention award, so that's for highly effective, effective. And then principals will also receive an award of $5,000 each, and that will total $160,000. The recruitment award, we've determined that, based on what we have, there are about 127 teachers that are eligible for the recruitment award. They must be first-year teachers, and they must, again, have the content expert, as determined by the Florida statute. And then after that, the remaining balance there is $3.8 million. That's where I want to talk to you in detail, because you all have to decide what you would like to do with the $3.8 million. If you turn back to page, excuse me, three of six, there are four options there. So with the $3.8 million, the legislators have said that the boards have to decide what to do with that remaining balance. Essentially, we've determined that there are four options that we can, that you all can select from. So the first is, teachers receive the same award regardless of if they're highly effective or effective for the 18, 19 school year. And then paras also receive an award. Interestingly, instructional personnel do, does include paras. So that's why we included paras here. The term instructional personnel does include paras. Previously, in, in previous years, Best and Brightest excluded paras specifically, and it was only provided to classroom teachers. However, within the recognition award, they are saying that you can provide it to anyone that's instructional personnel, based on the Florida statute, and the definition, based on the Florida statute of instructional personnel. As a result, we have included paras in the first option. But it's really up to you all to decide. The second option is, teachers will receive different awards based on their rating of highly effective or effective, and then paras, again, will receive some award. The third option is, highly effective and effective teachers receive the same amount, and then paras do not receive any award at all. And then the fourth option is, teachers and, I'm sorry, teachers receive different amounts based on highly effective or effective, and then paras do not receive an award.
Ms. Fortney, then Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Ms. Fortney.
You're welcome.
I just want, I've read this over and over, and I, I love option one. Just FYI. But when you say highly effective or effective, is that VAM or SAO, or?
It's based on your district evaluation, which does include SAO. So it's not based on your VAM.
We're sure.
This is money we control as of right now. I've not received any notification from the state that we don't control this money. So as a result, it can be based on your district evaluation, and that's the way the statute reads as well.
Okay, and then my last question is, and this is not you or us, but why is it always K through 12 and not pre-K? Our pre-K teachers?
So pre-K is specifically excluded-
Yeah.
...in the Best and Brightest this year.
I just wanted to put that out there, because they work so hard, you know? That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
I want to go back to the, the classroom teacher content expert bonus.
Yes, sorry.
So the state of Florida, do they have a clearly defined definition of what a content expert is?
Of course not.
Oh, there's the problem. So, do we-
You look at page five of six.
So do we have a clearly defined definition of what a content expert is? Here's my concern, if it's a checklist, and somebody can go through there, and it's really clean, and they can, they check it off, here we go, I'm a content expert, I'm fine with that. But if, if not, how does that happen? And from my perspective, whatever it is, if we have, for example, a team, or, you know, committee making that decision, I think that leads to a lot of headaches and heartaches. So I would hope that we would have in place a real clean evaluative instrument, a clean checklist that says you are a content expert, as opposed to having someone else make that decision somewhat arbitrarily.
So I should not say that it's not as clear. If you look at page five of six, the third bullet in the middle, it says content expert in math, science, computer science, reading, or civics. And so what that means is that their degree has to be in one of those areas. They have to be certified in that area. They can either have a master's degree in that area, or a bachelor's degree with five years' experience with, specifically within that area.
So that has to be defined.
That is defined, yes.
Well, no, it has to be defined. It says five years of experience in the associated area. Somebody has to define the associated area.
Oh, correct.
That's where it becomes problematic, I think.
Correct.
So I would hope that we would be very clear about that, so that it doesn't create, again, challenges for us.
Yes, sir. One of the things that, in discussing this, we were looking at other districts, and so our quote-unquote "application" is based off of actually a combination of Hillsborough and Pasco's. And they've already done a lot of the groundwork for us. In addition to that, we're trying to be as broad as possible with this, to make sure that as many teachers as we can get an award.
Ms. Reynolds, Ms. Fields, and Mr. Townsend?
I have two questions. So the first is, for the, on page five, for the newly hired K-12 teachers, are those three bullet points determined, I know the first one's statute, are the other two bullet points determined by us or the state?
Other two, sorry.
The initial teacher seniority date must be between July 1st and 2019, and November 6th, and never worked in Polk?
So we did that. July 1st, 2019, and then November 6th, that was actually just the date we met. So we determined those numbers, or those dates and stuff, excuse me, and then never worked in Polk. We looked at Osceola, Pasco, and Hillsborough, and they have the same language, so that's why we pulled that language from there.
My, my only concern with that is that if we lost a teacher from Polk 10 years ago, I think if they're still a great teacher and they're in Hillsborough County, we want to recruit them to come back. I don't have any shame in stealing teachers from our surrounding counties. So I don't know if there's, obviously, we don't want them bouncing back and forth every year, but I don't know if there's some way to include that because I think you're more likely to recruit someone that is in a surrounding county, and they may have done a couple of years here and then moved to Orlando and moving back and forth. So I don't know what other people's opinions are on that, but.
We could look at some other parameters, maybe have not worked in Polk within the last five years or have not worked in Polk within the last 10 years, if it's the pleasure of the board.
I just want to make sure that we're not, people aren't saying, oh, well, I can't, you know, I don't want to go back to Polk because I can't get their recruitment, but, you know, if $5,000 is gonna convince them to come back in 10 years, I still want it back. My other question was, for the recognition award, would that, would the people that qualify for the retention award, the highly effective and the effective, would those people also be receiving the recognition award?
No, so you can only qualify for one award. With the 3.8 million dollars, again, to Mr. Wilson's point, we wanted it to stretch as much as possible. And so we didn't necessarily believe that a teacher that received 4,000 should then additionally receive another, let's say, $1,000. We're trying to just make it as broad as possible and as far-reaching as possible.
Ms. Miller's next. Ms. Fields, next.
I have a question on, going back to page three, Ms. Townsend. The option one is in bold, is that what you guys are recommending?
Correct. That is our recommendation to provide paras because paras do really a heavy lift within our schools as well. And so that was our recommendation as well. We've talked to the union, to Mrs. Yocum about it specifically, and so she agrees with this recommendation as well.
Personally, I think it's a no-brainer that we would want to give the paras as much as we can since they don't make much to start with. So I would be very much in support of option one.
And for the board, that is why we voted that, that is the recommendation that we were bringing forward. It was in bold, was option one. So thank you for pointing that out.
Mr. Townsend, then Ms. Miller.
Yeah, that was gonna be my, my question if you guys had it, but I, I have one additional question about the civics. I'm just curious, do, is it, do we consider the history degree or a political science degree or are, are indicators of sub-subject matter expertise in civics? Because there really aren't any civics degrees out there.
Right, so we've gone round, round and round about the definition of civics because, as you said, there, there really aren't any civics degrees. So yes, we're including social studies, history, and more, but yes, we're including those as well, political science.
Ms. Miller, then Mr. Wilson.
On the, under the content expert bullet point, are all of those statute or some of those you were able to define?
No, all of those are statute. Except the last one, supporting documentation, including unofficial transcripts and/or employment verifications, will be reviewed by HRS to determine eligibility.
I just know we have some teachers who may not have a degree in that field, but they are certified in the field and they are excellent in the field, but they wouldn't be eligible.
No, not per the statute. And it, it's really unfortunate, when we ran the numbers, we actually thought it would be a lot more than 127 because most of you all know we hired 700 teachers this year, and so.
How many do we have? I'm sorry, 127 is?
That meet the content expert based on our screening of it.
Yeah, that's tough.
Mr. Wilson?
Well, I just want to be on record as saying I support option one as well. I think that whatever remaining funds we have to allocate that equitably among the teachers and our parent educators is, is the right thing to do.
And just to be clear, so teachers will receive one award and paras will receive another award, okay? Mrs. Reynolds, you wanted to change, never worked in, in an instructional capacity previously in Polk? Five years, last five years, is that?
Yeah, just something that we can recruit people to come back to us if they've left.
That is on page five of six.
Just for the record, I did put in last five, five years.
And also, just so you all know, the goal is to get this paid by March 31st, which is when historically best and brightest has been paid. So it's always usually paid in that March check. We're trying to do that again this year. There's a timeline on page six of six that will need to be altered a bit, but overall, the goal is to get it paid by March 31st.
Yeah, I just want to say too that I, I support this. I think it is so important that we continue to find ways to tell our teachers how much we appreciate them. And while I know this isn't a tremendous amount of money, every little bit helps in a family trying to make ends meet. And so I thank you for the work that you've done. And I look forward to, hopefully, as you've indicated, that we're able to do it by the March 31st paycheck. That would be really awesome to get that rolling.
And if not, they'll receive an off-cycle check in April.
What does that mean, off-cycle check? It means so time in April, prior to, oh, okay.
But the goal, right, the goal is to be in March, in March.
Which has happened in the past.
Yes, that has happened in the past as well.
I am also in agreement with option one. I just wanted clarification on the recognition award. Is that just teachers that were in Polk last year and are back in Polk? Or if they came from a different district and were highly effective and are effective and are now in Polk, do they still qualify?
That's everyone.
Everyone, okay. As long as they're in Polk this year.
Currently employed by Polk County Public Schools and not on a leave. So when you're on a leave of absence, you can't get it, but if you're currently employed by Polk County Public Schools, then you do receive the bonus.
Thank you.
Mr. Townsend?
Just two, two questions about this before we're done. I mean, I think, one, hopefully this is the last year or something like this, we're dealing with this in this way, we'll see. I just want to point out the states, you know, they, for the, for the bonuses that they directly control, they're making individual teachers responsible for the overall performance of their environment. Like, 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 you can be the best, have the highest numbers in the world, and if everybody else in your school has numbers that aren't as good, you're not getting the bon, the bon, the bonus. I mean, that's, that's just anti-individual. I, I, I can't imagine any other setting really where individual performance doesn't matter. And I think that it just shows how little thought is put into this at the state level. I think for folks who are highly effective versus effective, you know, that's a very imprecise science. You know, like, like, like what's highly effective, what's effective? You know, I, I, for those folks who got highly effective, who will be getting the same bonus as the effective folks, you know, I, I just, I want to make clear that I think it's really important for the entire staff to feel supported and, and pushed forward and, and that the factors, as everyone knows, that go into those, those, those rankings are, are imprecise. And I, you know, I always look forward to making it more precise and more, more fair, but, you know, I think that's, those are just two, two points I would have been.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. She also have the next item that's coming before us, which is regarding the school calendars.
So school calendar for the 2021 school year has been a tentative calendar. And so we met with the calendar committee and we made a few updates to this one, and it's really just two updates, actually. So previously, August 5th was a staff development day. And so we have now changed that to August 3rd, 6th, and 7th. No, 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 I'm sorry. It's August 4th. I apologize. And then also, there were two staff development days, Wednesday, that were early release days, on Wednesday, September 2nd, and Wednesday, November 4th, and those are now teacher workdays. Yes, ma'am.
So when I read over this, it, it appeared that the district actually took away a, a day during pre-planning that they had to be somewhere and they could actually work in their rooms. That would be the 5th. Is that correct? Instead of having to go somewhere and have training or be in meetings, we only have one contact day.
We have one contact day and then the other day is a staff development day, so they're there for staff development, right.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that that's a positive, everybody sees that as a positive thing. Yes, okay. Because teachers are in their rooms trying to get ready.
Ms. Miller?
I just, I appreciate, I don't know who's on the calendar committee. Are there teachers on the calendar committee?
Yes, there were two teachers this year that showed up. I think Mrs. Cunningham had someone to show up. Mrs. Fields had someone to show up, if I'm not mistaken.
Are we supposed to assign?
She's been on there forever.
Yeah, there, there are a number of people that are on the calendar, community members, staff.
Because the biggest feedback that I got from this past calendar is the teachers returning on that Friday of Christmas break. That was negative. And so I see for the next two years, it's proposed to bring them back, which kind of floats with the days too.
Well, so based on the discussions in the calendar committee, and those are all public, I think PEA discussed having teachers return on that Friday because they didn't necessarily like returning on the Monday. That was their feedback because they needed some time just to get back in the classrooms without the students before the students come back, and then they actually have the weekend to go back as well and prepare. So that was why we did the Friday ending of Christmas break or of winter break.
But the next two calendars will be them coming back, like on a Monday and students returning on a Tuesday, it looks like.
Yes.
And that's, okay.
It follows that way with the dates.
Okay, and I think for elementary students, that's much easier to start with a reduced week.
Ms. Fortney?
I remember being in this work session, sitting out there when all this was discussed, and it, it really did fall to just the way the days that Christmas landed that it wasn't like it was planned to be punitive.
Oh, no, no.
No, I'm just trying to say with what Ms. Miller just said.
No, 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 it wasn't punitive at all.
It just the way the days did fall.
I think it was a combination of both.
Exactly, yeah.
It was a combination of both.
Mr. Townsend?
I actually attended the negotiations a little bit last, last weekend. I was, I was really encouraged to hear a discussion about a sort of broader discussion of calendar and, and specifically around early, early release days and whether we need them and extending the school year to account for that, whatever, you know. I, I, I fully support having that conversation. I was curious if that has been set, if you guys are, are talking about that yet. And, you know, just, just, and also, also, I think the broader balance of, of our folks getting the chance to work, like, you know, have, have workdays versus professional development days that they may, may or may not find particularly useful. And I think it's a, those things are a big, all-encompassing conversation, and I was pleased to hear us recognize those as a big, on both sides, a big encompassing conversation. So I was curious if you guys have set a date.
No, and for context, at our last calendar committee meeting, we discussed making the early release days just full teacher workdays, how many minutes we would have to make up, if we would have to make up minutes because the thing about the early release days is that they count towards the minutes for students being in the seats. And so that is a larger discussion. I've talked to Mrs. Bird about it briefly. We were thinking first of talking to, obviously, you all, having a plan before you all first and then talking to the community about it and getting that community feedback because we know that parents support everything that we do, and so we don't want to make it an inconvenience for them either.
Yeah, I just support the conversation, that's all. I just want to push to make it go forward.
From where I hear.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Fields?
I think that, I understand the value of early release days. However, I think that consideration needs to be taken for nonprofits like Roseanne and others that have to get those kids up, pick them up from school, and by the time they get in their seats, it's time for them to go home. And then I think that it needs to be thoroughly looked at and making sure that teaching is being done during that window of time. And maybe even getting some type of feedback from the students themselves. Is that, is that a, a good learning experience for them, early release days? Because I hear different things. Some days, they feel like they have been exposed to a, a, a great learning environment, and some days they feel like they have not. So, again, I understand the value of early release days, don't get me wrong, but I just think that there needs to be a little bit more oversight and maybe a little bit more monitoring to make sure that it is a great learning experience for those kids since they're going to school for just a couple of hours, especially at high school, since by the time they get there, it's time for them to go home.
Ms. Miller, then Ms. Reynolds?
I know the feedback from a lot of elementary schools is, if the staff has things to do, they're unable to do them they're waiting in the office, they're assigning kids to teachers to wait for pickup. I, I understand about the time in the seats, but I think we should look at that again about how effective those days are just because of the feedback from, that's the elementary experience, that feedback. And now you've said high school, that does make sense. By the time they get there, they're leaving. They're feeding them at 10 o'clock in the morning to send them home.
Ms. Reynolds, then Ms. Fortney?
Yeah, I, so early release days, full disclosure, started when I was in high school, so from a student perspective, you don't learn anything on those days just because you're in your classroom 25 minutes and by the time you get your textbook out, it's, you just sit and do nothing. So I fully support the conversation. Can, are we still on the first calendar or are we looking at the second calendar too? I know that last year, or it may have been year before, when we discussed, it was that school could not start before August 10th. But I see in 2021, it's starting on August 9th. Is that, we're allowed to do that, I guess, is my question.
So yes, per the statute, there's a specific, I think the second Monday of August, it can't start before.
Before the second Monday, gotcha.
Excuse me, you spurred your germs.
Sorry, really sorry.
In August, and so it is starting before, or on that date.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Ms. Fortney?
Well, having taught on early release days in middle school, it really depends on your leadership at the school. Like, and to kind of go with what Ms. Fields was saying, you know, I've heard horror stories and then I've had really good leadership, that we did some celebrations at, at that time and, you know, things that make kids want to come to school. You know, rewards, awards, whatever, and then it depends on who's in the classroom. You know, if you've got somebody in there that doesn't know how to handle a shorter timeframe, you know, some of us made up activities, like with different things that, you know, it just really depends on the person. And, you know, but overall, you know, most people, it's a pain, you know, for parents especially.
Ms. Cunha?
And I would have to echo that same sentiment of everyone who's spoken today. Having a husband for a teacher that's affected by the early release days and his perspective of the lack of being able to stay on track because a lot of kids don't decide not to come because parents can't find a way to come get them. So therefore, if a good part of your class is missing, do you trudge forward and try to catch everybody up tomorrow? Or how do you handle that? So that's from a teacher perspective, and my daughter's in high school. And as Ms. Fortney indicated, it depends on the individual. Sometimes you're actually learning new material because you have that 25 or so minutes, and other times you're working on homework that's being assigned to prepare once again for the full lesson the next day. And it just depends, as she indicated, on who the teacher is, quite frankly. So I think this discussion, this early, the early release days, part of it is what I'm referencing, really needs to be looked at because I know that, you know, a lot of folks really want to teach their kids, but sometimes that precludes them from doing what they would ordinarily have planned for that particular day. So, yes, please have the conversation. I really support that.
Certainly, we'll move forward with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next item we have is the IRS update and discussion, and Dr. Berius is coming. And as, as she comes forward, as you know, we, I don't know how many months. And as, as she comes forward, as you know, we, I don't know how many months have we been using it now?
Like two.
A full two, is how it's been? Okay. As you know, we've been tweaking the system and as we've gotten from some of your board, your fellow board members, some things that, you know, would work better in a tweak, and we've been tweaking it. So she's going to bring forth just an update where we are and any discussion we can have. If there's still some different things that we need to tweak within that system. Again, we wanted to make sure we did a full year implementation of it, to make sure we can see how it's working for you. Some things we can add, some things we can take away. And she'll go forward and let you know. So far for us, it's been working very well on our end. So, Dr. Berius.
Yes, so we tested the system amongst the cabinet members prior to rolling it out, just as a quality assurance test to make sure things were functioning. And we made some changes. And as we rolled this out to the board, we had some feedback where they wanted to see, they wanted an extra column or they wanted to see who the responder was. There were some concerns about privacy, where there was some confidential data. So we have the ability to essentially select and mask that data so that it, the system is working as expected in terms of the data flow. But it's the privacy, if there's any confidential data, it's not shown. And there's an option for feedback. And then the, the system is also designed for custom preferences. Right now, we have it such that if, I think you're getting a weekly digest of the, of all of the requests that have been closed. And you can get a daily digest, you can get your own response to just your request, or you can get, you can get notified for every single request. We don't have that turned on for every single request, because we didn't think the board would want a lot of those emails that they'd rather have a summary. But at any time, you can go in and look at any of the requests that have been completed and closed. And so we've made some updates based on feedback from several of you. And so, right now, we're just, it seems to be working as expected. So I would welcome your comments, thoughts. Yes, ma'am?
Ms. Miller?
I am, I sent an email that, or IRIS request, this has actually been used since October. And trying to find the best way that works for everyone. These systems have been worked, have, we have used and spent tax dollars creating email management systems for board members in the past that have never stuck. I've talked to at least two previous board members in two different cycles where this was used. So I'm a little concerned that we're still trying to finish something that obviously didn't work well at one point. And maybe changing some things, like what you've talked about, would help. But this, my biggest concern was, this was not, I mean, I would have loved to have input at the creation of it because I've, you know, out of all the requests I've had, some of them lag five and six days behind. And I just want the public to understand that when I'm asked something, the process of what it goes through. So if somebody asks me a request or if I generate a request, it goes to a person and is an executive, some of the executive assistant, we have two, that determinate cabinet member that it goes to. The cabinet member answers the question, returns it, or sends it out to be answered. It returns to the cabinet member for approval, and then it goes to the board member who asked the question. That works for some things, it really does. This is not the only mode of communication. And I don't, I don't expect it to be with staff, not that it's taking five and six days to return some of it. And I wish the board would have had some kind of input on it as it was being created. Because the biggest problem is, if you answer a question, or whoever answers the question, the cabinet member approves it, it comes back to me. It closes. I might have further questions. It might not have been enough in the answer to what the person who's, you know, community member needs. There's no way to follow up and say, you know, thank you for this, but this is also a concern. You have to generate another request. It really delay, it's really delaying some information. Thirty-eight percent, I've asked, thirty, since October, I've asked 31 questions and 38% of those, 12 of those, were delayed five and six days. So that's not effective communication for board members. And I didn't know that, you don't know what input you've had from other board members, but that's been my biggest concern. One, that it's total, it's, it's sold as the only way we're to communicate. And obviously, because some people don't need to use it, I'm sure they're communicating in their own methods. So if we're going to use it to communicate and track questions, it just needs to be, it needs to work more effective for board members, not just staff.
Any comments? Mr. Townsend?
I have a question.
Ms. Fields?
Ms. Miller, you said that if board members are not using this, they must be communicating in other ways, but they've been, we've been told not to.
Have we been told not to?
Can you clarify, told not to communicate to who?
No, staff. Our staff is, I'm told staff isn't to call or to communicate with us. This is the way they're supposed to communicate.
Okay, I just want to make sure, just because we're not utilizing this, a lot of times I'm communicating, I look into the superintendent.
Right.
And getting whatever answers I might need from her. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what that meant. Thank you.
Yeah, because a lot of the time, I'm not going to bother the superintendent with questions about, you know, crosswalks at a school. I mean, that would be something I could call Ms. Usher and get a quick response. Or if it's some information, detailed information, I can put it on the system. What I'm saying, if we're not all using it, then tax dollar wise, like we're spending a lot of time on a system. I've been in, in this position for over a year and we still aren't figuring out a, a good method of communication that affect, that it works for everyone. I am, I am submitting requests, there are several others that do some, that don't need to, some have, you know, different relationships. I just need to know that when you're, when we're working on this, are there options to go back in and say, can we expand the request? The answers on the request, or is that not an option with the creation of this system?
We haven't had that request. I mean, we can.
I mean, I've shared it with, I've shared it.
Quite a few adjustments based on the, what the preference of the board is. My understanding is if there's a request that takes more than two hours, then the board as a whole has to approve for that request to move forward. So there may be a delay if something's going to take staff more than two hours to gather, because it has to come before the, the entire board for approval.
Yeah, and I've noticed that with someone, they're tracking the time, and I know that can be used for data. But some of, if it's taken 45 minutes for somebody to give me a name of someone, then I'm questioning, how long does it really? You know, that's not, I don't know that it's an effective way to judge time. I'm trying to use it as, as, use it as it's intended to be used, but as an effective way to communicate. And right now, some of this is not, it's not, I still have them open from January the 9th. So I don't know, I don't know if other people have similar experiences, if they're even using it. I don't go on, I don't have time to go and look at all the other requests. But three, since October, with that few requests, seven a month, I would hope to have a better return on the answers. And the fact that I don't need them to close before I've given consideration to the answer from staff.
And I can't, I'm trying to pull it up where I can look at the return, because the staff usually, once they, it gets to the date that it should be completed, there's an additional message that goes to the cabinet member that this request needs to be complete. Right now, it's, mine is still trying to load on here so I can pull it up.
And I've met with the superintendent, and we've talked about some of the things that have been, this, this isn't working well. And hopefully, they can make those adjustments.
We've tweaked some and still it's looking so. Okay, we'll look at that, expanding the options.
And you mentioned that you get a digest of, I don't get that. So is that not, is it sent to board members?
I'll have to go back and check. It may be that.
I think I actually get it when mine closes.
Yeah, we only get a notification when my request.
When yours closes, okay.
Right.
Yeah, we do get the, which ones are closed and which ones are open. That's why I want to go back and look at those.
And deputy are getting a digest at the end of the week of, of those. But there's some options if, if you want notification. We didn't initially think that every board member wanted to be notified every time every one of them closed, since they can go in and look within the system, that they only wanted to know when theirs was addressed or closed. So that's the way it's set up currently.
Okay. Ms. Reynolds and that's Ms. Fortney.
My only comment has been particularly when there's data given. For example, there was one, I believe was Ms. Miller's on Achievement Academy last week. It doesn't format the same way, I think, as they're being sent. So my assumption is that just because of the way that it's written, that Rob probably listed each of the Achievement Academy, BARTO was this many buses, Achievement Academy, Winter Haven, like on separate line items. It just comes as a big paragraph blurb, which is really difficult.
To read.
To read, just because, you know, I started looking at it and I was like, wait, does the six go with the first one? Or is this the number after, or is it before? So.
Sort of supporting the data.
If we, it's just.
Pushing it together.
It just makes it one paragraph, so if it could either.
Can you attach it? Can you send it attachment?
Yeah, it can either be in attachment or if it, but I just, I don't, I'm assuming that you guys probably, none of you realized it was doing that, so. Or if it can, in the response, be in the same formatting as they type it in, either way, would be very helpful.
Ms. Fortney, Ms. Townsend?
I still have one of them from January 10th, but the person called me and said it was going to take a little bit more time, et cetera, which to me is fine. It's not like it's life or death.
Right.
You know, but I, I too would like to know who the heck answers. Mr. Hill's very good about saying, Mr. Hill. You know, it just makes placement in my head easier, like where that was coming from. And then really a place to reply back, like even thank you. You know, it doesn't have to be like something big, but just a way to respond, like, maybe I did not word that question the way I should have. I was really asking this for the constituent. Does that make sense?
A reply.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what she was saying. Follow-up question is what I'm hearing. Right?
And, and who, who, who he answers.
Right, and who to send it to. Yep.
Mr. Townsend?
Technologically, I mean, I, it's fine when started, started, started use of it. It doesn't facilitate conversation, but you can work around that. I mean, it's pretty useful for having dates and times when things are asked for. My own personal sort of theory of usage was if I wanted like a factual thing, or if I wanted a report, or I wanted, I would ask that. And if I had somebody to interact with, I would try to go inter, inter, interact with them. Unfortunately, I've stopped using, using, using it, not because of the technology platform, but because of something that was declared in the last thing I asked, which was that the board would have to approve whatever I asked. And I'm not, I don't recognize the board's right to declare what is going to be answered. I would certainly not impose that on any of you. You know, I asked for very, some simple, very easy specifics about the trip to California. How many nights were spent there? And was told that that is a violation of policy 1112 because, presumably because it required some effort. But if that requires some effort, then any request requires effort. And they all have to be ratified by the board individually, and that's just not in any way a tenable approach. You know, I, the last, the last answer I had was, the board said, we didn't have to answer that. I'm just not going to deal with that kind of response. That's the public, you know, it's not me asking this, it's the public. And my fellow board members don't get to have a veto or a censor of what the public gets to know. I'm perfectly content to take that to the public direct, directly. I mean, if we want to change this approach, I'm fine to go back to, to using IRIS. But I'm not going to subject the public to a veto on what it can know that, that, that has to be ratified by the board. So that's, that's kind of where, where I am on it. Technologically, it's fine. I like the, the record keeping aspect of it. I was able to get workarounds to have the conversations that I needed. I mean, but I think it could do more to facilitate conversations. But it's more, you know, how individuals, you, 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 it's, it's much more a question of how people want to communicate through it, not what it can do technologically. So that's, that's where I stand on.
Ms. Cunningham?
Yes, so, a couple of things. Number one is, I know this was an item that Lisa brought up as part of our board discussions for our workshops, and thank you for doing that. What I've learned today to summarize is we need to include follow-up questions in this program. Am I, am I on the right page? In other words, if you respond to me, don't respond, it's closed, because I may still, after I've gotten your information, I may go, oh, wow, okay, wait a minute. I, maybe I should have clearly said it this way or whatever. Am I following correctly?
And, and I think that's what we're looking for, but is it going to delay another three days to go to a, to go to an administrative assistant, to go to a cabinet member to get answered, to go back to the cabinet member to come back to us? Or is it a conversation? That's what we need to, that's what you need to define.
Okay. So, help me, because we, we need to meet the needs of everyone. So if, if I have a request and you send data back to me, is it, does this system have the ability to respond to me and say, here's your data, but leave it open so that if I said, oh, wow, yes, thank you, but you know what? It made me think, what about this? I'm making up an example, certainly. Do we have the ability to do that? That's my question. That, that's a request.
And I think that's when we have, what we have to get back with the program, with Jason on that one, to see with the program, like we've been doing with him on the others. He's been wanting to go in and look at the program that was written for him.
We can certainly look at functionality, but we would programmatically, if you want a follow-up.
Yes.
Then what happens on the follow-up? How does it actually, in the system, get closed?
Okay.
So for every item, if you want a follow-up.
Yes. It should be automatic until someone says, thanks so much, I'm good. I mean, kind of like.
So the board member is going to close it? I mean, that's where we hit. I mean, it, it sounds easy when you talk about it, but programmatically, you have to get very detailed on the, all of the if, then, what.
If I ask the question, I should say, thank you, that's enough information.
Thank you, I'm good. Thank you, I appreciate it.
It should be up to the person requesting information, if it's, if it's been answered totally.
Right, right. If they're, kind of like we do in an email, right? I would say, you know, Ms. Berius, da-da-da-da, and you go, okay, and answer me. And then I write back and say, okay, but I need, what about this school? And you go, da-da-da, but perfect, that's exactly what I needed. Thank you. So that's number one, to summarize. Second thing is timeliness. I'm hearing some concern about timing, and I don't know. And again, to kind of talk to both, we did put in place years ago that requests that require over, and, you know, you've defined it today. I don't remember. It was two hours work, okay, I don't remember. Comes back to the board, because we, we need to be cognizant of the hours that it's going to take staff to answer one person's request. So the only way that we as a group knew how to manage that was to say, okay, Lori, you know, I know you need this information. It's going to take my staff maybe two and a half, three hours. Do you really need it? If you ask me, what am I going to answer? Of course I need it. I wouldn't have asked you for it, right? That's what I want. But the staff works at the pleasure of the board, not of one board member. And to try to make it fair and equitable, we said, what's a reasonable time? And I don't remember. And the group has a consensus with staff's input. Few years ago, we said, what about two, I guess it's two hours, and I would have to go back to that work session. And I haven't done that in preparation for today. So if it's two hours, then you're supposed to come back and go, hey, Lori needs this, it's going to take me longer. And then the board says, you know what, I kind of want it too. Yeah, let's go forward. Or I go, you know what, looking at everybody, I probably don't need this as bad as maybe I thought I did, because I understand staff's time is very valuable, so therefore, don't worry about my request. That's kind of where that came from, just to give a little background. It's no intent to skirt the issue or not deal with it. It's just, we have to have a point at which requests for information does not tie up staff's valuable time, period. I don't know how else to say it. So, timing for these is probably the next question. The response, as we've indicated, to leave it open-ended in some sort. And then secondly, timeliness. I don't know. The other thing, I'm just going to suggest, I mean, I don't know what the superintendent feels, because we haven't talked about it. But ideally, if you have a, if you, Lisa, have an individual in the community that is asking you for information, I mean, could you put it in there? George, da-da-da?
That's what it's, yeah, that's obviously.
And then say, hey, if you could get this to me by Friday, because I'm going to the blah, blah, blah meeting, and I would love to be able to tell the, then they can go, like I would go, wow, okay, she needs it by Friday, can I do it? You can do it, you're right back, or whoever, Wendy or the, and then try to get it to her by Friday, because she's trying to meet with somebody, because I don't think that happens in this program. We're human beings. We're trying to meet the needs of the people that we serve, and I get that. So timeliness is really important. In other cases, she may go, I can wait, you know, week 10, whatever it is. But if not, by not closing that answer, gives her the ability to go, oh dear, I forgot to mention, I'm meeting with George on Friday and I really would love to have that information. Does that? My, I'm trying to summarize what I'm hearing, because I've heard it from everybody. Does that, my, I'm trying to summarize what I'm hearing, 'cause I've heard it from everybody, different times and different places. So, and we want the system to work, and it's a great system, we appreciate the customization. We're just saying, it's a little more tweaking to make it good for everybody, is really where I'm coming from. Trying to make it work. Yes, ma'am? Or actually, you would call, oh.
Okay, okay. I know you had mentioned keeping them opened. I'm afraid if we keep them opened, as opposed to letting them automatically close in the system and then reopen them, that it will appear from Superintendent Bird's end or Mr. Hill's end, that there's sixty-two notifications opened, whereas it may be a conversation going back and forth, or a conversation may have completely stopped. But if it's possible that it automatically closes, but then with a follow-up, like if you click, "Follow-up," it'll reopen. Does that make sense? I'm just afraid if it's saying that it's, it's left open, and it's a conversation going back and forth, there's no way for anyone to monitor whether or not the conversation's happening, or if it's just gone silent.
Is there just some way that when I'm the staff, and I just responded, um, to Sarah Bass's request? Can he or anybody see, "Yeah, I responded." So I'm not in trouble for not responding, but then she can follow up? It may be a week, it may be ten days. I, I don't, I, I don't know, I just think those are tweaking, and those are the human side that needs to be put into a computer system to allow everybody to follow. I don't know how else to say it, you know? I don't know.
I think that's what I'm saying, is that if a staff, you know, if Tedra responds to something, but it's not gonna stay open until I say it's closed.
Right.
Well, if I don't respond to it for eight or ten days, then I don't want Tedra to be in, in trouble, 'cause it's, it's open, but it's my fault that I haven't closed it.
Right. However you can program it to make it more flexible for the dialogue. These are like, boom, I'm done, it's closed, we're finished. Whereas, hey, I've got a few more questions now that I've read it and thought about it, and that kinda thing. So however, you might be able to tweak that to help us out.
Let's get hands on this. Mr. Townsend?
And this may, 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 maybe more appropriate for the communication part, but just relating to your, your point about staff, staff time. The, the request I made, that the board be vetoed, is like, one email from the superintendent to the folks who sent her to California to give us some documentation, and then maybe five minutes just to answer the que- the question. Like, we're talking about ten minutes of staff time at most, and the board just vetoed that because apparently didn't wanna hear the answer to it. That's not a technology problem, that's not a platform problem, that's not a, that, that's nothing that Iris is gonna fix or not fix. I think that's, you know, probably better, better discussion for the wider communication ques- ques- question. But in no way did my request violate policy one-one-one-two, and if it did, every request does. And if every request has to be individually ratified by the board, we're not gonna get.
Oh, no, no, I wouldn't anticipate that, sir.
Ms. Phil, then Ms. Mower?
I think we need to go back and look at that policy, 'cause if my memory serves me correctly, it doesn't give a specific hour. It says that if a board member is requesting a lot of information, it's gonna take a lot of staff time, that it needs to come back before the board for discussion. I think we need to go back and look at that policy. Wes?
I'm pulling it up.
And I think we're on two different subjects.
Right, agree.
Yeah, this, this, no, some board members aren't using it, I'd like to hear from you, um, I'd, I'd like to hear from the superintendent, like, if, if she wants phone calls from me, if I have a question of, "Hey, how many teachers are in the IBUs?" It took five days to answer that. You know, I don't wanna bother the superintendent with those kind of questions, some other people reach out to staff. It depends on who's reaching out to whom, I don't know that we have, we have, this, this cannot be the only way I communicate, it, because it's not effective. And so, maybe we need to hear how you communicate. I mean, it's even hard to access, if I get something on my phone, I have to screenshot, open up Iris, attach it to Iris, but I, but I think it's great for tracking, so I try to do that for things that are, that are information-seeking. Yes, because it's great to track them. But for simple questions, I can text somebody and get an answer. I'm not gonna use this for every question, um, and I think that needs to be clarified. And it, because it's not effective for some of the stuff that needs to have a faster return. But if we're gonna use it for logging, it's a, it's a great way to log questions, so other board members can see what other, you know, needs are in the community across the district. If my district are specifically ESE, people are asking me certain questions, other board members could, could log in and see what that looks like. So I think it's great for those usage. I think it just needs to be friendlier for both users of the system, and right now, it's not. Mr. Wilson, how do you use the system?
Ms. Phil?
My, my thing, I'm looking at the Iris app now, and so, Lori, it says, "Close." Is it possible to have a tab added, "Follow-up required," or something like that? And then when the follow-up is, is taken care of? Because it's pretty simple, you have open, close, and then follow-up required, and then follow-up answered, or whatever, I don't know.
Mr. Wilson?
I think that's a great question, and I, I think my approach is different. For example, when I came on the board, one of my goals was to clean up our debt situation, do away with the derivatives, improve our credit rating, and, and, and reduce our interest rate, because that frees up money that we can use for salaries. And I haven't done the research on that, but I bet if we, if we ran the numbers, we would find that much of the salary increases we've given were a product of, of that initiative. And, and certainly, the, the credit for that goes to Mr. Proon and his team, and, and the staff in general. But it's a different, it's a difference of looking, what is our plan? What, we have a plan, what is that plan? And are we making progress on the plan, as opposed to asking for numbers and specific data sets? That's where it becomes time-consuming. And so oftentimes, and you do this too, I know we all do this, I'll get a superintendent permission to meet with Mr. Proon, or with one of the other staff members, and say, "What is our plan? And how are we doing with that plan?" Because at the end of the day, that's really what matters most. So at some point in time, I may, I may say, "Hey, I wanna know, how much money have we freed up that we've been able to use for salaries?" I don't, I don't know what that number is. But I'm sure that would take a lot of staff's time, and I, I'm a little reluctant to do that. I know we've made great progress, there's no question in my mind. What that, what that translates to in terms of data, I don't know, because I'm reluctant to, I'm reluctant to pursue that and, and, and to burn up their time working on those kinds of issues. So, it's, it's just a difference of style difference. I'm not saying that people shouldn't ask for the data, I think that sometimes is very important, but I'm just saying it's a little different style approach. So I don't, that's why I'm not, I'm not doing that, I'm not going to folks asking for data, asking for that kind of information, as much as you are. Again, I'm not, I'm not criticizing that, I think that's important, I'm just saying I think it's a different approach and style. Looking at plans and, and how we done, have we made progress on that plan? I don't need, I don't necessarily need to see that in terms of specific numbers. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I don't know that you get direct calls from schools, or, or staff, or teach, or parents, like some of us, that have been more engaged in the process of the schools are getting. So it's probably a different approach from that perspective.
Absolutely, I agree with that completely. It's, it's been in my, my role, I think, has been a little different in that regard, because I have not actually been involved at that level, so I agree with that.
But I will say, there have been, I know Ms. Fortney had some questions that came up. One time, she needed to meet with an individual staff member.
And I asked her, it was fine, yeah.
Right, and she said, "Okay." So, there are several people say, "I just want, I, I wanna meet with a staff member to get that information, they'll email me, and I'll say, 'Sure, meet with that staff member.'"
And I think we've tried something new when asking to meet with staff members, is that you're copying on the original request, so there's not a delay in that meeting, because I've, that's what we did with the last meeting with, with Dr. Steinke and, um, Mr. Hill. So from your perspective as superintendent, what is your goal for this? Is this for the daily, "Hey, wait a minute, I've got somebody calling that there's no, there's no school, there's no crosswalk, and he's, you know, they're worried about their kids." Is, like, what was your goal for, for this program? Is it for those day-to-day questions? Do you want to be called for those? Do you want, like, I don't wanna, I'd like to know, you know, what your objective is.
When it came to Iris, it was for the request that needed to go back out. Board member request, I mean, if you need a request for information, that came through the system. Like I said, there's been times when, um, it was just a quick thing, like, you know, um, I think Ms. Usher had a meeting with someone, a board member request, I think it was Ms. Fortney. That she just needed something from the community, and she wanted to get that, and it didn't take long, and she emailed me and said, "Can I meet with her on this subject?" And Ms. Usher, and they met just briefly on that. But for the board member request information items, those came through there, because that way we can see those. A lot of times, sometimes you get the same requests that Ms. Cunningham may get, and that request is already captured in the system as well. And so that was the whole thing, if we can kinda keep it. And then we have the cabinet members that are actually able to make sure those requests are going out to the appropriate person. Couple of times, we had got some requests, and they went to the wrong person, and then the reason it took so long, because one person was sending it to another person, this person was sending it, that person was off. And that way, we're able to get it to the, to the right person, um, who's handling that communication for it. So that was the whole idea behind this, and streamline the time down. I would say overall, the system and responses have been pretty much spot-on, they be getting them back in to people. I'm gonna look at requests that you're sending that are still out there, but they've been getting those requests.
One closed while we were here.
They've been getting those requests, um, and I know some came right at the break and different things like that, but those requests have been, they have been really getting those requests answered and closed out.
Is staff-directed only communicate through Iris?
No, if they, no, if they get a request, if you need to meet with them, they let me know, we set those meetings up. There have been meetings with staff. Send an email, there have been meetings.
Superintendent Bird.
Yep. Ms. Mower, Ms. Fortney?
And, and this is, you're asking how we communicate, I, if I get something from a parent that looks like I, I send it right to Mr. Hill.
I, yeah, through email, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, it just depends on what it is.
Right. There is some confidentiality stuff that I don't send through Iris, because it's very, because the person sending it to me wouldn't want it broadcasted, even though it's public record. And I email it directly to John Hill.
Ms. Wilson?
And I would say, that's the other thing, is that, and I know that there's a box we can check for whether it's confidential or not, but it appears, I think, that the rest of the board is still seeing it. Is that correct?
The confidential.
They're still seeing it, they're just, it's not included in the name?
Correct, I think it's, I think you're allowed to see it because you are a board member, so it doesn't violate the FERPA law.
I just think, I mean, as far as, I think there's oftentimes people contacting us that they may feel comfortable with one of us, and for everyone, that is likely a different board member, that they don't necessarily want it broadcast even to the other, the rest of the six of us. So I do, I mean, there's several cases that I'll either, um, call Superintendent Bird, or call Mr. Hill and say, "Hey, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna put this in Iris, 'cause I know that it's a sensitive topic." And you can pretty, you know, even if you cover up the name, you can tell by the details a lot of times who's involved, or who may be involved, and that's, you know, I wanna make sure that we're protecting our people as well.
Sure. Mr. Wilson?
And, well, see, I wanna be abundantly clear, I, I am not suggesting that any board member shouldn't ask for information about, I think that's an important thing to do. But there is another perspective, as, as a CFO who's been on the other side of that table, when a request comes to me, or came to me, uh, for information and data, I had to develop the information, I had to check it, I had to recheck it, I had to evaluate it, I have it reviewed. That can be sometimes a, a day-long process, because once the information, the data is released, everybody challenges it, everybody questions it, everybody, uh, has, um, their comments they wanna make about it. And if you're in a, in a meeting, a board meeting, for example, and you have board members who are challenging that information, you made a mistake somewhere, it's incredibly painful. So, um, that, it, there probably is a lot more time that goes into that work than, than most folks realize. It's just not a matter of getting the numbers and bringing it forward, they have to be checked, rechecked, evaluated. So that, that's an important thing to take, to consider. And I'm not suggesting that anybody not ask for data, I think that's an important part of what we do, I'm just saying that there is a, there is another thing to be considered there.
I would encourage you to go on and look at the other board members' questions, um, very few of them are for actual data, it's more inquiry.
Ms. Cunningham?
So you did ask me how I communicate, so let me be clear, um, from forever, I normally, when I get a request, depending on the sensitivity level, I always, 'cause that's been the established rule between me and the superintendent, is that I would email her, and I copy Mr. Hill, and I copy Ms. Winchester. Because due to everybody being crazy busy, I don't know who may see it or not, and depending on the level of importance and timeliness, kind of as we discussed, I allow them that flexibility, and then to, for somebody to get back to, if not me, at least the parent, the customer, is how I view it. It's the parent that's having an issue with a child in a school. So personally, I don't go through Iris for that, I use, uh, I email, email is my tool, I don't call. I email, and that way I know that I've said, I've indicated that, and it's in writing, and then I do expect a follow-up, which I usually get very quickly. It's passed along, I don't know how, 'cause I've done it when Ms. Bird's been here, I've done it when she hasn't been here, um, and vice versa. And somehow it gets to the, um, my ladies in the back row back there, um, that do the yeoman's work in our schools. And I always get a response back, "Hey, so-and-so met with the child, the ti-" whoever, whatever, and they usually get. But my most important thing, like yours, is that that parent gets a response. So that's how I have been communicating, and it has been successful for me. So you asked, so I wanted you to know that.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend?
Maybe I don't recall, but have any high-data, high-work requests been brought back to the board for consideration? Like, any ones that have been made? I mean, like, uh, it seems like we're having discussions over hypotheticals, but, but somehow they're not hypothetical. I, I mean, it, it, I don't, if a request is deemed an, an overuse of staff time, the proper mode for that is to bring that back at the next meeting? Is that, is that the proper? But that hasn't happened yet, like, and, so, so no one's made a request to that effect? Is that, am I correct?
Ms. Fortney?
Well, I know when I first got on the board, I asked for the turnover rate of, um, of different schools from staff, and I met with Superintendent Bird, and she let me know real quick that that was a, a heavy lift for an already overworked, uh, group of folks. And, um, so I just, you know, asked for, um, the top ten that didn't have turnover. I thought I'd ask for the opposite, you know, so we can maybe use that as model for something else, but that's personally, but that was before this, you know, right here.
I've had one, I mean, it's this, it's this subject matter, I wanted to know the dollars spent, as, you know, 'cause I'm being asked, when I'm telling how I communicate, 'cause they'll say, "Oh, they did that years ago, wasted money, and it never, it never took on, and they did that to so-and-so, and that never happened." So I asked for the dollars spent to create the system, and the time spent on it, and it was rejected as too much time to look that up.
Right, but, but it hasn't been brought up, the board hasn't discussed that, I mean, or, should we discuss that?
I, I'm rescinding that, if you're, if we have, if we've made positive comments here, that one, this isn't the only way that I can communicate with staff. Two, that we're gonna look into ways to make it friendlier for board usage, um, and just when we're gonna follow up with you. And I can at least convey that, you know what, we have Tina's dedicated to this working, and we're gonna make sure it's useful for all members. You know, it's an easier message to send than, "Hey, there they go again, wasting staff time on a system that didn't work the last few times they tried it." It's easier for me.
I just want one last point, I mean, we all agree, right, that state law says we as board members can go walk onto a school at any time we want, and look around, and, like, that's what the law says, right?
Correct.
Okay. I don't think any of us do, I don't think that's not how we, but that's what the law says.
Right, I know.
How does that extend, like, that spirit extend to professional staff, or, or operations? I mean, like, I mean, and again, not that any of us would do it, but I, I, I'm trying to establish that this, the government, you know, state apparently has a bias toward openness, or the least, least, least of that, maybe, maybe it's just intrusiveness. But, like, how does that apply or not apply to the expectation of?
The, the language of the statute specifically addresses schools. It, it doesn't really, um, address district offices or, or other facilities. And I, and I, I, I don't know what the, what the action was that caused that reaction, but I suspect that, that it was, that there may have been districts where that had become an issue. And so, it also, it parallels statutes that are, that protect the rights of legislators to do such things. But, yeah, it was, it was designed to make sure that board members had access to the schools in their districts.
Well, and I guess with that in mind, it probably behooves everybody to have a good faith, ability to exchange with one another, so we don't get our legislators involved.
Mr. Wilson?
So I'm looking at a data set that Tedra sent us, that seems pretty substantial, and I see those things sent us, not irregularly, and I don't know who's making those requests, but, uh, you know, goes to my point that we should make them, this was a very helpful, very helpful information, I'm not saying we shouldn't, but I would also encourage everyone to think about what, how much time and effort goes into those things. Sometimes they're important and necessary, and you just need to ask for them, but I see those kind-
But I see those kinds of, of, that kind of information, this kind of dataset come across, again, not irregularly. I don't know where they're coming from. I don't know who's requesting them.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have a follow-up, Ms. Barrios?
So, um, I wanted to, the couple of things I heard is to address the formatting of the messages or use attachments. We can certainly look at making sure that the data comes across. You'd like to know who answered the question, which I thought we had already done, but I'll go back and look at that. And then you'd like the ability to respond or have follow-up questions, um, on a request. So I will, I can get with the programmer. Um, but one point of clarification, do you, if we do that as an option, programmatically, we can make sort of a separate option. I, I guess what I need to understand is who is it that then should close the request and make sure it's closed?
The asker of the question.
So I think it automatically closes and the follow-up reopens the question.
Would you have to, would you have to track the reopens, though? I don't know if that would get, I don't know how to, I don't know the tracking end of it, if you're trying to track.
So if you closed it and then if there was a follow-up, the, are you saying have the person asked question do the follow-up? And then that would kinda kick back? I think that's gonna be a question for him.
Well, and, and then how many times do you wanna follow up? Because then do you want it just to kinda run on under the same thing? Or do you want one point of follow-up? So otherwise, from the data tracking, it, it could get difficult to kinda track who's responding to what? If your follow-up requires somebody else and it goes?
I think you need to, we need to define what we're tracking. Do you know what I mean? If we're tracking the, the item of information, then I think it should be like an open conversation. When the conversation has ended, it's closed. If you're tracking how many requests, then you'd have to track it a different way. Do you know what I mean?
So that's what I'm saying.
Ms. Hill?
So you get the request, you get the information, you send the request. When we do that, we hit the button. It usually closes.
Closes it.
So what, what I think I hear you saying is then there's a, once it closes, they have additional questions, they hit a button. Follow-up to that particular stays in that lane.
Right. So it makes sense.
It would come back, you, you fill it out, you hit the button, it was closed. If they still had a question, they would hit that same. Would that keep it in the same lane, so to speak? Same, same item? I don't know. I don't know the technical world.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Um, you understand the intent. The intent is to have the ability to follow up perhaps multiple times based on the question and then the answers received. So could you please go and work with the folks and come back and talk with us? And so that we can, 'cause you understand what, what, where we wanna be and what needs to be achieved. And rather than us trying to get into your weeds, um, we're okay. However it's done behind the scenes, just so long as we're able to do follow-up questions, perhaps at least two or maybe three times. And at that point, perhaps it would need to be a new question. I, I don't know where, but that line is.
The only other thing I share with the superintendent is a way to mark urgent. There's no way to mark urgent unless I say, this is urgent. And I only had one that was. It was a nursing care issue for a child. This is urgent. I had to write it in the subject. I would like a way to red flag, like Mr. Wilson. If I'm asking for actual data, I don't need that in 24 hours. If I'm asking if a chi, if a parent's calling because a child is, you know, there's something that could cause injury or it could, or we're missing, um, not providing services. If there's a question about that, I, you know, 24 to 48 hours, I need to mark that as this is something that you need, we need to hear back from. Um, different than, hey, I'd like to know how many, you know, white milks we ordered for a certain school or whatever. So I would like a way to mark urgency.
That's a great. Very, very good suggestion.
Yep. All right. Thank you, Tina. And while we transition, the chair would like to take a break. 10, 15? 15 minutes while the academies transition.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome back. So today we're here at one of, at the request of the board member Wilson, who wanted to have a presentation on our academies. And today the team is here. So, Mr. Wilson, I know you would like to say something regarding the academy's presentation.
Yes, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Um, actually, and thank you for coming and, and thank you for the update. I'm sure, I'm sure you put a lot of hard, hard work and effort into this. I was kind of hoping that Ms. Reynolds could elaborate a little bit on her trip to Nashville. But my bigger question is this. The state of Florida imports 30,000 machinists and welders every year, the high-paying jobs, that don't require high school diploma. And, um, I, I, one of the, one of the discounts I have, one of the challenges I have is understanding we, we have a lot of folks who are not abstract learners. They, they're very hands-on, uh, practical application learners. But yet it seems like the state of Florida requires that when we, working with our academy, by the way, I'm a huge fan of the academy, totally supportive of it. But it seems like the state of Florida requires those students to also have the abstract skills. For example, you know, I, I might be able to build a house from scratch and be quite good at it and pass all of the requirements that are set by, uh, local government, but I don't know how to put a blueprint together, right? And it seems like the state requires both of those, both pieces. I'm not, that's, I don't mean for that to be taken literally, but they, they have to have the practical skill sets as well as the abstract skill set. And really, my question is this. What, what leeway do we have in, in building those programs so that we're designing them for students who are not abstract learners? That are, that are hands-on, practical learners? How do we get them away from the state requirements that they take the math and, and the other, the other things that they, you know, they're not gonna use? Um, and, and don't, and, and aren't, and aren't gonna sit in a cla, and the bigger issue is they're not gonna sit in a classroom for them. That's the real problem, right? We can't keep them engaged because they have no interest in doing that whatsoever. Do we have any leeway, um, or are our hands pretty much tied?
Yes and no. And that is a great question to start off with the academy presentation. Because the idea of academies is to create a, uh, small learning community for our students, which is reinforced, yes, go ahead and, and put up the key elements of the academy, which is reinforced, um, with, uh, team teaching, cohort scheduling. Uh, and the team teaching is supposed to allow reinforcement of those skills that they're learning in their class and bring those in and bring those concepts in, uh, to the math room or to the English room or classroom, um, to break it down for the students so that they can understand that within the concept of the, um, of the vocational area that they're, that they're learning about. So they try to adapt the English and math skills to the actual vocational curriculum.
But they still have to pass a test.
They still have to pass a test. That's, there's no, we have no leeway on that. I, I would love to see the, um, eh, some changes at the state, which would allow us to focus on students, um, strictly learning the skills they need for employment, the areas of interest that they're in, um, uh, and so that they can be successful. But right now, the only way around that for us is to reinforce those skills in the academic classroom through the vocational curriculum.
And I, I know you've set some, some things in place. You have some, um, techniques you're using to, to help those students get there and, and that's wonderful. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. But that's all we can do at this point in time, right?
That's all we can do. The academy option is the best option for those students who are strictly just interested in learning vocational skill. Because we're taking that skill and translating it into the academic classroom. Before, uh, I go any further, I, I wanna introduce my, uh, great, uh, academy staff that I have here with me today. To my left, I have Reba Coyle. May you know her. Blessed to have her. She's a new addition to the office and, and she is, um, my liaison for the community and for business. Uh, to my right, I have my two academy coaches, Laura Webster and Tamara Fields. And, uh, everyone here will be part of this presentation. I'm gonna, um, to, uh, kick the presentation off. I wanted to say something about where we, where we're at in academies. It was almost 50 years ago, in 1969, the academy framework was developed by the Vice Mayor of Philadelphia, Ed Bowser, um, at Edison School. And, uh, the purpose of him developing this academy was almost draw back to, to your question, which is these kids were unengaged, they were not passing school, and they were not getting jobs when they left school. He developed an electrical academy and he led it with, uh, a foundation of principles that we're still using here today. There are 10 standards which are included in your book, um, that all academies try to follow. And those are, those principles were developed 50 years ago, uh, in Philadelphia. Almost, uh, 13 years ago, the, uh, the city of Nashville bought into the academy concept and became the model for academies throughout the nation. Although we had been working with academies for almost 10 years here in Polk County, in, uh, 2014, we started to go through the academy certification process, which is a process to see that we meet, the academies meet these 10 standards of, um, academy frameworks. So, uh, right now, we stand at, uh, 24, uh, certified academies. Uh, we're working, uh, on six more. We have a plan, which I'll go into later, to develop to double that number. But I, I wanted to go back to the, um, key elements of an academy. Uh, we talked about the small learning community, the team teaching, the cohort scheduling. Uh, we have, uh, a college prep and, uh, sequential curriculum with a career theme. Uh, and when we say college prep, that, that includes, again, going through all the academic courses and earning that regular diploma, uh, with an addition of an, either a dual enrollment credit or a, uh, industry certification before they leave that academy. And academies have strong advisory boards that forge partnerships with employers, higher education institutions, and the community. They're building connections to bring the benefit of the community and the employers into the classroom. Talk about our data from when we first started going through the, uh, the accreditation process. You can see we've increased our academy enrollment by almost six, 6,000. The numbers had flipped from where we have, now have more students involved in academies than we have students not involved in academies. Some of the things I'd like to point out, academy students, although, um, uh, since we've increased, the, the numbers have gone down a little bit, they're still higher in GPA, uh, in attendance, in earning industry certifications, in graduation, in participation in dual enrollment, and in, uh, FSA completion. Our demographics have changed, uh, for the better. They look more like, um, average Polk County demographics. We've made great improvements there, but we have areas that we continue to, uh, need, that we need to continue to work on. Although we've increased in ESE participation, we're still under on that number. Uh, English language learners, we're also under on that number. These are focuses of my office and we will continue to increase those. I'd like to point out that one of the things that we've developed to, uh, increase, uh, ESE enrollment is we've built a connection with Roosevelt Academy and we've gotten them, uh, involved and participating in our, uh, construction, uh, council. And, uh, we hope to make them a certified academy in two years. Yes, ma'am.
Just a quick question about that. We just had a meeting about Roosevelt. It's not an ESE center school. It actually, we're trying to attract gen ed students there. So when we're selling those academies, how can we, because it's an, it's a, what's a school that doesn't get the grade, Mr. Hill? It's a, um, alternative school listed that way. So when parents look it up, they may not want to send their children there if they're, if they're the people that buy the degrading. So what can we do with academies to attract not only ESE students, but your typical gen ed student to that?
Strengthen their academies and put them through the certification process. Because when an academy becomes, uh, a certified academy or a model academy, it's much easier to advertise. We can show the parent, okay, well, what's different? If I put my kid in the Roosevelt Construction Academy, what's different than me putting them in another school? We can say, well, your kid is gonna have an experience which will include meeting these 10 standards. They're gonna be in a small learning community. There's gonna be, uh, some connection between the vocational class and their, um, uh, their academics. So it's, that would be the way that I would work on improving.
Do you think we could balance that campus with, um, students who, parents who, for the history of that campus, have been serving students with disabilities or, or special needs? They don't, not serving the most significant, but serving that mild to moderate student. How do we bring in the students who, your excel, your excelling students that might not want construction? But other phases of the construction academy that we could sell to, or that we could advertise to the students, the higher performing students that may are, are looking for something similar?
Well, uh, again, I would have to look at, um, you know, increasing, uh, their academy participation. See what academies they have there now and look at building ones that would attract, uh, students who may be more academically inclined.
Do you have minimum, um, that school, oh, for six through 12, has 200, less than, around 250 students? Is there a minimum that you need for that academy? Because that's not very many students for an entire school.
Well, that's, that's a, a very good point. Um, and that's why, uh, I do wanna point out, we have, uh, many academies. Some are developing, some are certified. But we also have programs, uh, and there's nothing wrong with having vocational programs that will never be an academy because their enrollment may be small, uh, in that program, limited interest, but still of value to the student to, to have that. Uh, I would have to look closer at Roosevelt and look at the division and see what we could build there because the number enrolled is, is a limiting factor.
Thank you.
The transition, uh, from, uh, the demographic breakdown. Are there any questions about our demographic breakdown? Okay. I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Ms. Webster, who is gonna speak about our current academy initiatives.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
Um, so under tab three on your binder is a list of those 10 standards that Mr. Cochran mentioned. And I do want to point them out because they are kind of the backbone of what we do with our academies. We wanna make sure that each of these academies is maintaining each of these standards with fidelity to the best degree that they can. And when you're looking at our presentation, along the bottom, you'll also see that we indicate what we're talking about with you. We do this when we do trainings with our teachers and, and other, uh, community members as well. 'Cause we wanna make sure that we know what the standards are and that we're supporting their implementation of them as well. So you'll see as we move through on the bottom of each slide where it says NSOP, that's National Standard of Practice, and which one we are referencing and which one we're discussing at any given point in time. As Mr. Cochran mentioned, there's two levels of certification or accreditation. There is a certified academy and then there is a model academy. When the National Career Academy Coalition comes to do a site review, they use a rubric and they use that rubric to score how well each of the academies is implementing those 10 standards. We currently have 10 academies that have received certified status. And if you look in, under tab four, there's a list that shows you which ones have received certified status. And then we have 13 academies that have received model status. Um, and that is the highest level of, until last year, it was the highest level of distinction you could earn. They just added a new higher level last year, so we haven't had the opportunity to pursue that yet. So hopefully this year, we can add a few under that higher level. I think it's model with distinction is what it's called. So they've started to have academies that are getting perfect scores. So we haven't had one of those yet, but hopefully this year. So we have, it's a, it's a four-year cycle. So you have your accreditation year and then there's three years in between. We now have six academies that are recertifying this year. They've already certified four years ago, so now they're in their second cycle. Um, and that includes Bartow High School Culinary, Frostproof Ag. Those were both model academies in their previous certification. We have Fort Meade High School Pharmacy Academy, Haynes City High School's Ag, EDA Academy.
Environmental, Outer Culture and Technology.
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, and then Ridge Community High School has Engineering and Medical that are both going through reaccreditation. And then we have six academies that are seeking accreditation for the very first time. That gives us a total of 12, which is our largest number to date. It's a lot. We have, uh, two academies- We have two academies at Bartow High School, Criminal Justice and ACE, that are seeking accreditation. We also have Haynes City High School's AMP, which is the Academy of Media Production. We have Lake Gibson High School's Educator Academy, Lake Region High School's Culinary Academy, and then Winter Haven High School's Medical Academy. It is worth noting that for two of those schools, Lake Region High School and Winter Haven High School, they don't have any accredited academies yet. So, this will be a first for both of those high schools. So, that's really significant for them. They're working very hard to help us get there. So, that's just kind of what accreditation looks like in a nutshell. I do want to kind, no, I'm getting ahead of myself. Some of the other things that we're working on in our office and the Career Academy Workforce Education Office to kind of help support from our end is we are in constant contact with IT to help streamline our processes. We are streamlining the student flagging process in focus, which helps us identify, and it helps our schools identify which students are associated with which academy or academies. We are also working with IT, we meet people from our office, personnel, myself, and Tamara, and our data analyst, meet with personnel from IT probably at least once a month to go over our data reports to help us accurately break down the data that we have available to us, to help us access it, to help us disaggregate it, and to help us report it. And that may be a piece that is helpful when it comes to trying to kind of sell, Ms. Miller, as you mentioned, how can we engage some of those people that don't really know what's available? That data that we have access to may be something that we can use to help kind of sell those programs and those things, because we do look at post-secondary articulation like door enrollment, AP, SAT, ACT, those things that are available to students. So, that might be a piece that is helpful.
Thank you.
And we also work very closely with our school-based personnel, our terminal operators, our teachers, our CTE administrators, to make sure that they're accurately tracking and reporting data specifically for our purposes, industry certification data, because that is sometimes can be a little confusing for the reporting process. So, we're making sure that they're aware of how to report it and that it gets reported accurately to the state on our end. And then one other thing that we've done this year, which has been extremely helpful, I think for all of us, has been to identify a specific administrator at each school to deal specifically with our CTE programs. In the past, it's been kind of a, you know, hit or miss as to who we get in touch with for what purpose. So, now there is a CTE administrator at each high school specifically designated to be our point of contact. And their, their job is to be the CTE guru. So, when we, when we have a training.
I did want to add, we're also providing training to them twice a year.
So, who would fill that role? A principal, an AP?
For, for the most part, it's an AP.
Okay.
I don't think there's any principals.
Yeah, it's been all, it's been all assistant principals.
And they determine, at the school, they determine who the best fit for that, for that role is going to be. And so, we have provided training for them. We've provided training for terminal operators, for school counselors. As many people as we can get in touch with and we can get in front of, we are there to, to kind of give them our message and tell them, you know, what, what they need to be doing at the schools to kind of streamline and support the process. So, we've been really, really trying to focus on outreach on our part and making sure that everybody's working on the same page. Any questions? I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Fields to talk about some of our other initiatives.
So, as Ms. Webster mentioned, the National Standards of Practice are in your binder. The four that this slide references are all revolving around students and student engagement. So, as, as career academies are focusing on students, we have developed a student ambassador program. The ambassador program has been around for many years, but we have been fine tuning it over the last three to four years. The academy coaches, so myself and Laura, meet with our student ambassadors. We coordinate and facilitate the training for almost one hundred and twenty-five ambassadors every year. Some of those ambassadors are replicated from the prior year. If they were juniors or sophomores last year, they may have rolled up this year to a higher level. Some of them are brand new. So, we do hold a fall training, which we call an annual boot camp every fall. And then we hold a refresher in the spring, just to make sure that we are retouching on some of the skills that we train them on in the fall. And then prior to any events that we are hosting, we hold micro trainings to prepare specifically what those ambassadors are going to need in order to lead those school tours or events that are coming up. We take a step back whenever we do a tour, and we have our students lead the tour. So, the students are the, are the face of the academy, and they are the voice of the academies as they are meeting with business partners, other school districts, other school personnel, et cetera. The role of the ambassador is to represent their school, including advocacy and recruitment of other students coming up. So, we will often send our high school ambassadors to the middle schools to recruit at the younger levels. And then we will sometimes send our high school and middle school ambassadors to elementary schools if the elementary schools are, are willing and open, and most of them are. They are also the majority of the faces that you will see at the school showcase every year. Those are our, our Career Academy ambassadors that are out there representing their schools. The National Standards of Practice are very firm on needing a student's voice. So, students are present at our academy advisory board meetings, so each school that has an academy. Laura and I work with those schools to develop an advisory board if they do not already have one. Or if there is an advisory board already in existence, then our, part of our role is to help sustain that academy and make sure that it is strong moving forward. Those students participate in the advisory board. They help create the bylaws. They take part in the meetings. Some of our academies even have them filling leadership positions, officer positions within the advisory boards. And then they are a huge piece of decision-making. So, we are attempting to make sure that the decisions we're making at the advisory board meetings for our academies have the student voice engaged in that decision. Any questions about student engagement?
So, Mr. Cochran already mentioned the five-year plan that we have worked together to create. The biggest piece, I think, of the five-year plan is the goal to double the number of accredited academies within the next five years. And I, there's a whole copy of the five-year plan. It's thirty-eight pages long. So, you can look over that. It's under tab five in your binder when you have a minute. Some of the other highlights that we want to point out from our office that we're working on to support the academies is that we are looking to build an internship program that is district-wide. Currently, there are internship opportunities available at individual academies typically due to the relationship the teacher may have with a business partner. So, what we're trying to do is kind of centralize and systemize that opportunity. So, that way, we can kind of help sustain. That way, if a teacher leaves, that relationship doesn't leave with them, and those opportunities remain. And then we can better track and just kind of keep an eye on things. We do want to associate it with a course code so that students can earn credit for their class. We are talking to a representative from Polk State as well to kind of align what we're trying to do with the offerings that they're trying to offer at the post-secondary level as well, so we can make sure that we're not overlapping too much and we're offering unique experiences. But this is probably the biggest feedback we get from our business partners and, and community members, is that our students lack employability skills. What they, you call it soft skills, call them twenty-first century skills, call them employability skills, whatever, whatever you call it, that's the big gap that we hear about from the business community, is that they have a hard time hiring young people, whether they're fresh out of high school or fresh out of college, who know how to look you in the eye and shake, you know, give you a firm handshake, who have a well-developed resume, who know how to show up on time, take constructive criticism and feedback without getting upset, and, and take that and, and put it into their, into their practices. So, we're trying to do, we're trying to hear them. We're trying to hear that feedback that we're getting from our partners, and we're trying to work on providing that to the students as much as we can through career academies.
And I wanted to interject on the, on the internship program. The fifty interns this summer is really just dipping our toe in the internship process. Right now, if we wanted to, we could probably do two hundred interns over the summer. Would they be purposeful internships? Would they be, would there be a program to develop soft skills prior to the students starting their programs? Would they be married up to jobs and internships that match their academy? So, we are, we're working on building a system that will incorporate the academy concept and develop internships over the summer which match their student interests and their academy. You know, we would love to see, over the next four to five years, that turn into two hundred or more students involved in internships over the summer.
So, as Mr. Cochran just said, our long-term goal is that this becomes sort of a capstone for the academy experience, so that it's something that's offered to students maybe in the summer between their junior and senior year or during their senior year, so that they have had time to meet their academic requirements, to earn an industry certification or dual enrollment credit, so they have everything graduation-wise kind of squared away. And so, this would be something that they work toward and they earn this opportunity. We want to make sure, from our perspective, that we're putting a quality intern candidate out there, that we make sure that they have their resume, that they've maybe done some soft skills training. We would work with them on that. They have to do an interview with the business partner, and so they have to be hired to do their internship. So, we, you know, we want it to be a good quality experience, both that we're giving a product to our business partners that they have some, some use for, and that we're giving a good opportunity and a good learning experience for the student. We have run into an issue, and this kind of speaks a little bit, I think, back to what Mr. Wilson was saying about that those manufacturing jobs, construction jobs, have a little bit of a hard time hiring or even taking on an intern that is under the age of eighteen. So, one of the things that we are looking at is there's a pre-apprenticeship program called the Academy of Construction Technology that exists in several counties over on the Space Coast. They're in Orange County, Osceola County, and they have expressed an interest into expanding into Polk. And hiring students on as a pre-apprentice as opposed to an intern or just a student may give us some flexibility in being able to put some students in jobs.
What do we do at Lake Gibson? I mean, how do we do that with the internships at?
Lucky Martin.
Lucky Martin.
I believe those are all in finance, so they probably do not run into that same. Usually with the, with the industrial trades, it's, yes.
Because of safety.
Absolutely. And so, so that's something that we're working on so that those businesses, those businesses can still take on a pre, would be a pre-apprentice instead of an intern.
And I think on the I build, so I got to go on a tour with academies two weeks ago on the Teacher Work Day, and it was with I build and some of our CTE teachers for the Construction Academy. But there, I believe she said, are over four hundred construction companies that are involved in that, that are all partners to make sure that, that have already signed on saying, "We will take students under the age of eighteen." But I build is more so they take some of the liabilities, my understanding, so that that's what makes it easier for if they're under eighteen to go in.
So, the thing with that is that there is some, there's some language in the statutes that allows for if the student is engaged in a learning, in a course, enrolled in a course or engaged in a learning opportunity through their program, that there are, there's some more flexibility there. I think there's a waiver that you can apply for, and that is what, that is what the ACT program holds. They hold that waiver. So, they, they do take on that, that responsibility. And so, we are working with them. We're hoping to get some more information about that and then potentially bring it on board as early as next year if everything falls into line. I mean, they're, they're very much interested in expanding into Polk.
They want to be in Polk.
They want to be in Polk very badly. And we have a lot of construction, industry, business partners that really want to hire our kids and are just running into that, that limitation. So, they're, they're ready to take our kids into their workforce today. So, we just want to bridge that gap.
So, our district, I'm sorry, our department also participates in an externship program, which is where we send our teachers out into the business community over the summer for experiential learning opportunities for their own growth, to enhance their instruction in the classroom, and to strengthen their connections to the community for their students. This, starting this year, we are expanding that program to make it more intentional. So, as Laura mentioned, with the internship placements, making sure that they are placed in an industry that is a field they should be in or that they are interested in working in. And also to focus on academic cohort teachers, not only our career and technical education teachers. So, as we send a career and technical education, let's say, a construction teacher into a construction firm for a three-day internship over the summer, we are asking, would any of your cohort teachers also be willing to come along and see what that construction industry looks like, feels like, et cetera? So, that is a huge change this year with our externship program for teachers. That will, our goal with that is that it will assist us in cross-curricular teaching and strengthening that cohort for the students.
And I, I wanted to add here, and this is where the academic teachers get experience in the field, working in the actual vocation, because we don't just send just the vocational teachers into these externships to reinforce their skills. We're sending academic teachers too, so that they can see what actually takes place for these students in the workplace and translate those skills into their academics.
Does anybody have any questions about internship?
I don't know about that, but kind of follow up, Mr. Wilson. Some of the students that we lose because they can't, they have to take remedial classes or whatever else to, to meet the state requirements, there is a way to fit those into the academies. Are we doing that at any point? Did I move ahead? Sorry.
That's my next one.
Okay.
This is, this is, this is probably, I would say, our, our bread and butter of academies, really, this is where, this is where the magic happens, is when you do incorporate those classes together. And I, and I want to go back just a second to talk a little bit, Mr. Wilson, you asked how much flexibility we have. One of the biggest pieces of feedback we get, I would say, from our teachers, is that it is very difficult within the schedule we have for them to plan with their cohort schedule. You know, their, their team, their cohort team. But if you look at some of the other academy structures, Nashville is an excellent example, that's where the support happens for the students. Yes, it's important for your English teachers and your math teachers and your science teachers to plan together, but it's equally important for them to have time to plan with that cohort team. Because not only are they planning interdisciplinary lessons to help engage students across the board, but they also, that's where their, you know, NTSS comes in. They can talk about attendance. They, they talk about all of their early warning factors and how they can support those students. So, a lot of those students who fall through the cracks, a lot of those students who are otherwise disengaged are supported by that network of teachers because they're able to talk across, across content, not just, you know, horizontally as well as vertically. So, that is a piece that we're working very hard to help support our teachers in, and something that we would love to prioritize. So, that can happen a couple of ways. And all of the things we've talked about so far are the things that we're doing initiatives based from our office to help. But we are also working with the schools at their level, things that can be done to help support academies at the school level are really going to be your cohort scheduling, making sure that the students have not only a cohort of teachers, but a cohort of peers. Ideally, they would spend their CTE class together as well as three non-CTE classes. It doesn't have to be English, math, science, and social studies. It can be a reading class. It could be a PE class. It could be another elective. Whatever works best in that schedule. So, that the students, not only are they building relationships with teachers, but they're building relationships with each other. So, they have an identity that is, belongs to that academy. So, they know, you're in my ACE Academy, you're in my Culinary Academy. And they help support each other as well as the teachers. So, they, they spend that time together. That's difficult to do with a lot of those, those different classes, those singletons, you know, our, our math in high school progression is kind of all over the place. So, that can be a challenge. And one of the things that our schools are doing to help overcome that challenge is they are creating what we call umbrella academies. So, you might have an academy that is called ACE at Bartow High School, is the Academy of Architecture, Construction, and Engineering. That's an umbrella. Under that umbrella, you have three distinct pathways. You have an electrical pathway, you have an architectural drafting pathway, and then you have the construction and cabinet-making pathway. So, students may participate in only one pathway. They might participate in more than one. But what that does is that allows one English teacher, for example, to serve multiple students that are in multiple, like multiple pathways. So, that kind of helps that master scheduling piece that the- So, that kind of helps that master scheduling piece, that the administrators have to do, it kind of helps support them on their end. We would love, on our end, to prioritize, or at least better support, the cohort-team cross-curricular interdisciplinary planning piece. That's been a big piece that's been missing from the schools, prior to now. Some schools are starting to implement it on their early release days, on planning, afternoon planning sessions, but it tends to kind of fall by the wayside a little bit. So, we would love to see more of that happen, and that's something that we're working with our teachers to support, kind of what those planning sessions look like. And again, that's where your MTSS comes in, that's where your early warning system indicators can be addressed, that's where your common lessons can come in. Sometimes it's just as simple as, "We're covering this standard, we're covering this standard, we can reinforce it." Hey, in your social studies class, you're talking about this, but that also comes in over here in your culinary class. And then the students start to see those connections, and they start to realize, you know, Mr. Hill is talking to Mr. Bridges, and they both know what's going on, I can't pull one over on Mr. Hill, because he knows that I'm talking, you know, kind of like the mom and dad thing. So, that, it, it works really, really well. That's how, I taught in a system like that, when I taught at Summerland Academy, and it was, it was fantastic. The students, I knew all the students, they knew all the teachers, I cannot stress enough how important that is. I'm really passionate about that, yeah. I don't know who's handling that first.
I'll, I'll save more of my comments for the end, because I want to make sure you get through the whole presentation, but this is the single most important slide in the entire thing. This is the key to being able to do academies fully rolled out, and after seeing it in action, how we haven't gotten into this sooner, is just mind-boggling to me, because this is the most important part of the academy's working for our students.
And based on this, is it site-based on who? Scheduling is very site-based and managed by the principals, it's going to be the principals that think this is a priority to do. So, I'm concerned that that's a barrier, especially for schools that are struggling, they might not see the, even though we know in the end, the outcomes would be increased, if, you know, if they're worried about the grade, or whatever they're worried about, it's going to be left to the, how are they, how are you working with principals for them? Is it, if they're not, I mean, if we're not, if it's not top-down, it's left to sites, it's going to suffer, that's just...
We have broken down those barriers a little bit. We did have a cohort scheduling training, which we brought NCAC down here, specialists, and we had excellent participation from most of the high schools attended that training, and I think we knocked down some barriers there. When, when people see the possibilities, the problems change. You've got to show people the possibility of change, before you can get them actually to change. I do want to say that, following the training, I had stopped at Lake Gibson, two weeks afterwards, and saw up on their board, a plan to start doing more cohort scheduling. That was unsolicited, they didn't know I was coming, I did my heart in it, to see that the training had some effect. We've got to continue to work on that, it's got to be a priority of the principal. I will say this, I do know, every school in Polk County is different, with different populations, and different needs, and we will find ways to make it work at each school, and each one of those ways will probably be different, so.
That's really an important point there, Steve, there is a uniqueness across the county, and I think you'll work with Tammy Dawson, in aligning your regional, to support principals, and then the support and assistance you give, because we're talking about complex endeavors, we're not, then you, then you add a variety of those other pieces in, so I think that's a really good, excellent score.
Ms. Dawson has been an ally of this effort.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, if your principals are prime and ready as well.
I think that the understanding that cohort can be done with a variety of different types of classes is very important, because I think a misconception is that it had to be one of the academic content areas, and it absolutely does not have to be. And I think that, once we start to get that message, and maybe even just getting a few to kind of really wholly embrace it, and then kind of start to see what the benefits are, because I, I absolutely do not think that things like school grade, and acceleration points, and any of that, has to be sacrificed to do this. It can be, I think it would be supported, if anything. I think it would support those students who are on that bubble, that we, that we're always looking for better ways to support.
I just, a couple of things that Mr. Wilson brought up earlier, I think, really this touches on. As far as how we support our students in the math and science, and all of those other areas, when we were in Nashville, one of their umbrella academies was hospitality, hospitality and tourism, something like that, but underneath it was culinary, event planning, customer service, and one other. And so, in their geometry class, they had an event planner come in, and talking about, you know, how she used geometry in her job, and the assignment she gave them was, they had a room that was like 80 by 60, and they had to fit so many round, six-foot tables, so many eight-foot length tables, so many buffet tables, and, you know, you have to have four feet between each one, to make sure you can pull chairs back, and that people can get through, but it was like that aha moment, even for me, just standing there, saying, "Oh, that's, I would have never thought geometry was used in event planning," but it makes total sense that it's used in event planning. But when you have the cohort scheduling, where in that geometry class, it was all hospitality and tourism students, you have your culinary students, your event management, your customer service, all realizing, okay, this is how we use geometry in our field, whereas, it's going to be totally different for construction, or totally different for medical, but you, you can see, you can bring people in to show how it's used in the field, if that makes sense.
And that's perfect, and that's exactly what we should be doing, and the question is, why can't we test on that? Because that's tying an abstract concept to what they're going to be doing. But what happens in that case, they have to go back to the state laws, right, which doesn't tie in. I mean, maybe they make that connection, but maybe not. So, it's not, it's not a real practical application, from an educational outcomes perspective. And what's a little frustrating is, we have our colleges and universities that are teaching our teachers those differentiated techniques, but we can't apply them, because of state laws, and so it's handcuffing innovation. That's the frustrating part.
You'll find no disagreement on this. You know, the, we were excited earlier last year, when they said that they were going to have a CTE diploma, which they do, but it still keeps the basic academic requirements. So, there was no, there was no lightening of the academic load, or lowering of test scores, or requirements for students to achieve that, basically just added on some CTE courses.
And just, I know Mr. Wilson's involved a lot with legislation, but it's nowhere near coming to where we're going to do another diploma, because we've moved so far away from that, because of the abuse of packing kids into classrooms, you know, for years, without raising expectations for them. I don't know that we'll ever get, we're not even near talking about, and I understand what you mean, and I think it's 100% a great idea, but we've moved so far from that, that anything we do is going to have that academic base, they're still going to have to learn geometry, you know, like, it's tiered, there's no way to get around it, unless, I would like flexibility to be able to do it inside these classrooms, but it's not close to coming back to a separate diploma, even for Gen Ed kids.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
And I have a lot more to say about it later today. And I agree, the problem is, there is an organization nationally, that's driving that agenda, and it has a model in place that's not working for us. So, I think the key is for us to recognize that, to bring that to the forefront of fact, and I'll talk about that a little bit later, so that we can start turning education over to our professional educators, and getting their input on how we, how we change this, because it's not working. Our secretary, our Secretary of Education at the federal level, said, "This summer is not working." She was appalled by how much we've gone backwards, relative to other countries. So, we need to, we need to get to a point where we're engaging our professional educators, and turning to them, to solve that problem, as opposed to an organization that has a business model that's simply not working.
Mr. Townsend?
One quick addition to what Ms. Miller said, I think you're right, that lighter expectations have been abused in the past, et cetera. You know, to what extent, it's hard to tell, but I think today, the people in TAR, they don't care about whether kids are being warehoused or not, in any way, they, they use that rhetoric as a way to attack everything else. You know, I think that's a, like, they don't actually care about that issue you're discussing, they just use it as a weapon. And I, and I think that's important for us to understand, as elected board members, that just because somebody says a thing, says they care about a thing, doesn't mean they do, and you have to watch what they do. So, I agree with Lynn, I agree with Elise.
Okay. We realize we're going a little bit long here, so we're going to try to wrap this up, these last board slides. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Coyle.
So, my role with the Workforce Education Department is the business community, and from coming from Polk Vision, I realized that we have to educate the community and the businesses on the academies, and what our students are doing, and so I work, I'm working very closely to kind of, with Dr. Naomi Boyer, our new board chair, to restructure, and to really look into the business community, and see where our deficits are, where are we missing people at the table, where can we kind of slide people into maybe an industry council, or a site base? So, on page six, or tab six of your binder, there is a structure of our board, we have an advisory board, which is actually very large right now, we're about 100-plus people, that will streamline eventually. Once we pull into and build out our industry cluster councils, right now we have two, we have a construction council, and an aviation and aerospace council, we have some chairs of those boards, and everyone from those site-based, six, let's say, six construction academies, all of those chairs, and people come to that industry council. Once we build those councils out, and have a medical council, and we have a public service, and we have manufacturing and logistics, some of those advisory board, district advisory board people, will most likely come off, and either go into that industry council, or come to the schools, the base, school-based, site-based councils, where we really need their voice. I'm a true firm believer in the academy system, I've had two students that have gone through them, but I also know that we have to educate the public and the business community on what's going on. On the next slide, you'll see a great, great example of this. We took, on January 10th, about nine representatives, associates from Publix, they came to the table and wanted to sit down with us, and Stephen Tamara and I went with Dr. Boyer, and had a great conversation. We said, "Let's take you to some of the schools, what areas are you looking for?" They said, "Diesel mechanics, HVAC, we need culinary, we need automotive." So, we said, "Okay, let's take you to some of those academies, let's look around." And it was great, because one of the associates, and she's in charge of HR and things like that, Susan Toadvine, she said at the end, she said, "I have come to your advisory boards, and they're great, but seeing the students and the teachers in action, it is just mind-blowing, and what they can do, and what they're doing, we have to get our public out there, and our industry out there, to say, 'Okay, these are great things, where do you see a need?' And they sat down with us and said, "We need HVAC, we need diesel mechanics, we need automotive." So, that's what we need to hear from the business community, what's your need, what's the industry in this area in Polk County, and what can we do to fill those voids? So, I think that's what this advisory board is being very mindful about right now, is saying, "Who do we need at the table? We have chambers, we have our post-secondary EDCs, we're bringing representation from all over the county, and so all of us together will come to, you know, build some great boards, and help build these site-based, school-based boards, to really help get the internships, and the externships, and to bring the business community in, and say, 'Let me talk to you, as an associate of Publix students, on what employability skills really look like, what it looks like into the business community.'" And that's really important, it's important coming from the teachers, but it's more impactful coming from the business community. So, we're looking to build more tours, have more tours for companies, and bring more people to the table, and educate them on the great things that are happening.
I'll try to be quick on this. We wanted to talk a little bit about some of the professional development opportunities that we engage in, through the Career Academies, through the Career Academy model. We've mentioned the National Career Academy Coalition as our accrediting body, Mr. Cochran is a board member, and he also has been engaged to do site visits and site reviews, which is fantastic professional development for our office, because it really allows him to get out there nationally, and see what other academies are doing, and what best practices are out there that we can also implement as well on our side. We have two of our coaches, Tamara and myself, are part of the National Career Academy National Leadership Cohort, which is specifically meets three times a year, three times a year, and our last meeting is actually here in Polk, so we'll be bringing the whole cohort here to Polk. We're going to meet one day at CFAA, so that they can tour CFAA, because we have a group that wants to implement an aerospace academy at their school. So, that allows us to get out there and meet with, there's, there's participants from all of Maryland, Nebraska, Hawaii, there's one from Oregon, I think, all over the place, and it allows us to get together with those other participants, and share practices. As Mr. Cochran mentioned, we also hosted the Master Schedule and Cohort Scheduling Workshop, which I think was a fantastic beginning to supporting some of those things that happened at the individual schools, because what she really stressed was, kind of what we just said, it's not, it's not a cookie cutter, there's no master schedule, that's a cookie cutter, but there are ways that you can adapt these strategies to make it work within your own structure. We've talked a lot about Nashville, we hosted a Nashville tour earlier this year, which we took Sarah Beth Reynolds with us, and we are hoping to host another one in March, so we might be reaching out for some of you to come on that. And so, that has helped us, you know, helps us to get, we took some business partners this time, we took a few school administrators, community members, so that really helps for people to see it, to see what it looks like in practice, because, you know, one of the things they say up there is, for the kids, if they can't see it, they can't be it, and so it's kind of the same concept, that helps us see what we can, what we can really aim to. And then Tamara, and Reba, and myself, and Mr. Cochran, all presented this year at the National Career Academy Coalition National Conference, we presented, I think, three breakout sessions, as well as accompanied our model academies up there for national recognition. So, we're really, really working on becoming kind of a, our own, I hate to say our own Nashville, because we're our own entity, but as Mr. Cochran mentioned, mentioned that Nashville has been a model, Polk is a model too, and we're really working on that.
I, I think our niche is going to be implementation on the county level, where, where Nashville has implemented citywide, and that's their school system, and it's great, and it's, you know, they have a lot more uniformity, we have different communities and different challenges, but we're making it work here in Polk County, we're making it work in the Polk County way. I did want to point out, you know, we, we hosted a tour, a Nashville-like tour, last March, and we're going to, we have a custom tour for schools from Hawaii, that'll be coming here in February, and they'll be touring our middle schools, to look at how we do pre-academies, and how they feed into our academies. We are also in discussions to have another tour for the fall of next year. But, you know, we're very proud of the work that our schools have done. The academy, part of my office supports, our academy developed, our academy development very well. They're always out in schools, they're always out working with teachers, and working with students, and I think that this team is the one that's going to propel us to be even further, and people will mention Nashville and Polk County in the same breath. Yes, ma'am?
I just have a quick, we talked about this previously, about collecting data of these academy graduates, because, one, it can help market us in the community to businesses, and I think that's really the key, in the community, when I, when I'm out, it's the disconnect, and if, if we can connect the business community to the classroom, I think you're going to see major growth, but if we can show data to say, "You know what, this many kids at a legal academy have reported, that's, that's where they're going," or "Medical academy, this many finished college," or whatever the data is that you want to track, but to be able to represent that, I think would garner people wanting to make investments into the, into the programs, and just partner with us. The only other question I have is on the website, because in the past, I've, where I've had good, strong conversation about what the, what the entrance requirements were for academies, and I know we've changed a lot of it, which I appreciate, but there's some, it says, that have prerequisites. If I was a parent on this website, how would I know which ones have prerequisites?
They shouldn't, any of them have prerequisites.
Well, is that, is that just for academies? Well, is that just for academies, or does it say?
It says career academies.
Okay, it says career academies. I'm not sure. I can't think of one right now that has a prerequisite that is a career academy.
Can we update that?
I know that Summerlin Academy may have some prerequisites because of the physical activities.
Right, right.
And of course, there are prerequisites for IB and, you know, those. But I can't think of an academy that has a specific prerequisite, but we will check on that.
The math requirements.
I would just, yeah, the math requirements.
CFAA is what first came to mind.
I just don't wanna discourage parents.
Of course not, no.
Yeah, and there may be, there are some academies that if you, you know, if you're transferring in later, if you haven't met all of your academic requirements, may exclude you from taking it because unfortunately, you have to take remedial courses and you can't take, you don't have space for that elective.
That's what we run into. I just wanna, in the past, on our website, it read certain FCAT requirements, because that's how long ago we had to deal with this, our testing requirements. So if parents have remembered that, or if they had siblings, I would like to know, I would like their messaging, for us to message it in a more accepting, you know, kind of...
We are doing the website, so that's in process. And we will certainly, because I can't think of any that have requirements right now.
I know that NCAC is adamant that there are no exclusionary criteria for participation in an academy whatsoever. The only thing that I can think of that we may run into is seat space.
Right.
If there's not enrollment opportunity, you know, if there's not available seat space for a student who's out of zone transferring. But NCAC absolutely says, "No." They want open access to all the programs for every student.
And that's a, that's a great time for me to mention that we're up in academy enrollment or application by 14% from last year.
14?
So, yeah, 14%. We had a big increase. A lot of that is due to some great marketing campaigns that we did in connection with the acceleration department. They had a great plan, we climbed on board, and we really got the message out about academies. Ms. Fortney?
Did you say that there's a list of your new planned academies? And so what was the tab number?
I should say that those are academies that will be going through the certification process, so they will be recognized as certified academies.
But you said you're gonna go from, your plan was to go from 24 to 48?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
And is there a list of those?
I think that is in the five-year plan.
In the five-year plan?
Yes, ma'am.
It's in their five-year, I believe. So the current year is probably listed, but the rest of the four years aren't determined yet.
Okay, and then how does this roll over, especially with when you say specifically HVAC and stuff like that, or technical colleges? How do they kind of play in to us preparing kids to go there as well?
Well, in some cases, that is to track, I would like to see academies prepare students for both. Either prepare them for an extended learning experience in college, or directly, working directly into the, either going to college, or going to one of our technical colleges, or going right into the workforce. So ideally, that's what every academy will be preparing students for, one of those three tracks.
Gotcha. And then I just wanted to bring up, you were talking about ideas and stuff, and, you know, Bartow High School is a leader in all of this stuff. But I showed you the possible fine arts academy for Mr. Ekman. And then somebody over there, I don't know who it could have been, sent me an article from the 16th of January about the Sun Sentinel and the First EMT Academy in public schools. Wondered who sent that.
And I want to say this, and I would love to develop 100 academies at every high school. One of the things that I have to always temper enthusiastic principals or teachers with is, when we develop one thing, it takes away from another. So there really, there's, and to have a real academy of a body of students to have a small learning community, well, we don't want that small learning community to be 10 kids. A good, healthy academy has at least 100, 120 students in that academy. So as enthusiastic as I am about developing academies, I've also gotta temper it with, you know, there's only so many students to go around.
And that's where the umbrella model comes in really well.
Yeah.
Ms. Fields, then, Ms. Rose.
I have a couple of questions. Where are we on the Power Academy for Kathleen High School?
We have a teacher. And the program is being developed and supported by Legman Electric.
And what is our timeline?
It's up and running right now.
So the Power Academy is up and running now?
Yes, ma'am.
When did that occur?
This year.
Okay, I didn't know that.
This year, and we...
It's a full complement of Level 1 courses.
How many students do we have here on that?
He's got a full schedule, so he's got six full classes at least. In fact, I think he has more than he really feels comfortable with. I don't wanna say that out loud.
Too loud, we can just have a conversation.
It's well-enrolled.
Yes, it's...
And I want to say, I'd like to point out that we developed that academy and put that teacher there through our Perkins funds this year. And I can continue to support that out of the workforce office for three years, but then they'll have to find a unit.
Okay, well, thank you for that update.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have an updated brochure that lists out all the academies? We used to have that.
We have a guide.
Did you bring it?
No.
You know what, they wanted to bring the guide, and I said...
I did.
You should bring it. It would have been nice.
That's my problem.
More than one copy, so we can give them out.
Could you bring them back down?
Leadership.
I'll go get them.
We have a whole box that you guys could have.
Reba said she'd bring them back down.
You know, might not be able to answer this today, if not, that's fine. What year did we establish our first career academy?
Our first, that's a trick question, because there was actually an academy at Winter Haven in business that became certified through another organization, through NEF, I think is the name of the organization. Oh, it was Lake Gibson? Okay, I'm sorry, you're right, it was Lake Gibson. And it was, it was what, 10 years ago, I think, they became?
Didn't they announce they had the oldest academy?
They do.
That were there, yeah.
They do.
It's more than that, it was the late 90s.
I wouldn't...
Winter Haven had one 10 years ago.
I only know that they were the first ones and that they credited through another agency, and it was a while back. I don't have the exact...
Do you remember the, as long as that teacher had been there, and she had been there 30 years, like she had been there a long time.
Wallace. My point is, is that historically, we needed to make sure that we include that information to let the public know that we've been doing this for a long time, and that we are well-skilled and versed in moving the career academies forward. And we received a magna award grant, excuse me, a magna award in Chicago some years back because of our work. And so we didn't just buy off the trump truck, is what I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am.
So we really need to make sure that the public know that we are not a novice in this, and we're very skilled, and we're making progress with our students. A lot of the things that Ms. Reza said, that she's doing with the business community, so that they can be as supportive as they can be for our kids. And then making our parents and our students aware of what the opportunities are, especially our minority students. We're doing better, much better, but we could still improve in that area as well.
I think that that would be an excellent statement to open the first page of our website, the history of Polk academies.
We did, we did just make a promotional video for the tour that Mr. Cochran mentioned.
Somebody's watching us.
Wow.
Missy.
It's helpful.
So the opening statement on that video does say something to the effect that for more than 20 years, Polk County has been doing this. I don't know exactly the number, but I do know that we have started to publicize that. Because I know, for example, the Medical Academy at Bartow High School existed when I was still in school. So it's over 20 years old.
Thank you.
It's been there for, it's been there for a minute. So we do, we are playing on that experience and that history for sure.
I guess my last thing would be, is that it's a poor fault who does not praise its own pun. And I think we just need to do a better job praising our own pun. Thank you.
Ms. Rose?
I think a couple of comments just on the Nashville compared to us. Our CTE programs, what our actual CTE teachers are doing, is way more impressive than what they're doing in Nashville. The component that we're missing in Polk County is that it's not linked in with the academic teachers as well. And I think one of the places where it was most apparent was in their planning. So they have, for the, and the way that they do it is they don't have 100 academies. Each school has four to five umbrella academies, so it's, and they call them APs, which are assistant principals still, but they're academy principals, so it's an assistant principal over each academy cohort, instead of assistant principal of curriculum, assistant principal of discipline, those types of things. But the way that they do their planning is they all have it at the same time, and at least once a week, it is sitting through and going through every student that's in their cohort, and they're on a spreadsheet of, and they'll be highlighted, yellow if this is something we need to watch, red if this is something that's really an issue, okay, what's going on? And listening to the teachers talk about, okay, he hasn't been in my class the past week, he hasn't been in my class the past week. And then, you know, a CTE teacher can say, okay, he's in my class every day, what do you, you know, what's the issue? I'll talk, I have the relationship with them, let me talk to them and find out what's going on. And the way that they use it to be able to best affect the students, and make sure they're catching the students, that, you know, it's hard when our English teachers are planning together, our math teachers are planning together, which is still very beneficial, it's hard to be able to catch those kids because they don't, they don't really have a chance to talk about their shared students. Whereas this gives all of the students, teachers, the opportunity to sit down and say, okay, what's going on with Jimmy, and how can we, how can we best serve him? Do we need to go to a home visit? Oh, I taught the brother three years ago, let me see, you know, what's going on? One teacher brought up, you know, her mom was killed in a car accident two weeks ago, and nobody else even had any idea. So it's things like that that other teachers can shed light on that makes it really, really helpful for affecting our students.
Ms. Fortney?
I think that's how we were sold middle school years ago, that's what it was supposed to be. But, and now we see that we can't even get that together sometimes because of staffing issues. And that's the way all schools do it, whether you're under an umbrella or not. You know, you should have common interest in your kids. That's just to me, teaching 101, but what do I know?
Mr. Townsend, then, to Ms. Cleny.
Just very briefly, I was very pleased to see the evolution of the demographic numbers, it's an important job. Secondly, on the, do we have any connection between the construction academies and, say, the welding program at Ridge? I mean, are there, I mean, that seems like those are two programs that would naturally fit together somehow, I'm just curious if we have that.
So one of our, each of our construction academies, when we mentioned the advisory boards, we do have post-secondary representation on the individual school-based advisory boards, as well as the council, the overall council that Reba mentioned. One of our Ridge instructors sits on advisory boards at the schools. So when we're talking with the teachers and the students, and also us at the district as we're planning curriculum, that progression from either high school to a career center or high school to the university system is articulated in that conversation.
Well, does the welding program for us have to be post-secondary? I mean, like, can it be built into, I mean, it seems like these are assets we have within the district that could be connected. That's my only...
A lot of our ag programs, through ag mechanics, offer welding already. So some of those are not in the construction academies, but there's no reason why it can't be integrated into construction as well.
Okay. And thirdly, I know this kind of got pulled out of academies, and I don't need an update on where it is, I can circle back, but I still am interested in any language academy or a language-specific school. I think that's an incredibly important career skill. If you can speak a foreign language, I think that's not under your responsibility anymore.
It'd be a great cohort call.
Yeah, we had...
No, I mean, go ahead.
We, at one point, had talked too about, and this is something that they could do really in cohorting, where the Spanish class, I think my brother at UF had to take a Spanish for construction majors, which is huge in that industry. But when you do the cohorting schedule, that that's something I think that could be potentially offered, is that the Spanish teacher focuses on that language.
Right, I mean, I guess if that's been taken out of the CTE bailiwick, I would like to see us not lose sight of it. I think it could be important.
Yeah, Mr. Hill and I discussed the issue, and we've turned it over to the foreign language department.
I'll follow up. We're the people behind connecting that. But there's gotta be a creative way to really maximize the opportunity.
And I did do research on it and found one in the Orlando area and another one in Manatee. They were, one was elementary and one was middle school. And I think that the key to those programs were, was immersion.
Yeah, I mean, I think elementary's probably the best place to do it, but that's a discussion thing. I just wanted to keep it in the air.
I do want to say that I do think it's worthy, but I don't, I have enough on my plate in CTE, so...
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say, what a great presentation, having gone to Nashville years ago as we were beginning some of these expansion programs throughout our district. It's just amazing how far we've come, and I just want to applaud each of you for presenting today. This is a lot of information to do in a very short amount of time. The biggest thing that resonates with me is a comment that I heard a child tell me years ago when I visited one of the academies. And he said to me, "Ms. Lori, this is a place that I feel I can belong." And to me, if you find a connection in a smaller learning environment, that's huge. It's huge. And when I looked at your data, the very first slide you have went from 25% attendance to close to 48, now I'm quoting here, but, and that's, to me, is why, is because when they find, when children find a place that they can belong, it makes them want to come to school every day. Going back to the relationship piece that you mentioned, I just think it's huge. So thank you so much. I fully support, try to attend our We3 expos, or whatever we call them now, they change. Showcase, because that's what it should be. Quite frankly, I love that name. And the only thing I want to say is, we need more of these. I get asked by my school's middle school students' parents, you know, that, hey, what are those? How do I learn about them? I don't know how we do this better on the east side of the county, but I don't know if we put some, you know, in the schools, on the front counter there? Help me, because I know when my kids are getting ready to go, parents go, "What are my options?" And I say, "You gotta go to the showcase." And they're like, "What showcase?" I'm like, "Really?" So, yeah, and then I try to get this, through Cur, through somebody that I know that they can get a copy, and I said, "Explore it, and if you can go to the showcase and actually walk up to a kid," you know, because when they stand there and they're able to tell you what they've accomplished and how proud they are, what a difference that makes versus, quite frankly, okay, a brochure, but for those that can't. So I just think the showcase is the best thing we do, one of the best things. I know it's a lot of work on everybody, but when you can physically see a kid working on instruments and telling you what he did, why he did it, and how, you're like, "You kidding me? That is phenomenal." So kudos, thank you for what you do, and get some of these brochures over there. Help us all learn, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, team, I appreciate you, thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you for having us.
Take a five, let's do it. Everybody ready to take a five? Everybody get ready?
I think the chair is ready for us to resume our meeting, and we're gonna go ahead and get started. The next item we have before you is the item regarding communication. The one thing I want to open up, before I turn it back to the chair, is to say that last week was a very trying week for us, you know, and I wholeheartedly apologize to staff for the way communication did go out to them. Never my intent, as a former classroom teacher, never have been an intent to threaten or hurt anyone, it was only for him. It was only for information. So that went out. And I apologize again to this board for that going out, the way it went out. Um, and I'm looking forward to us moving forward from this at this point so we can move our district forward. And, and we continue on to the great things that we're doing right here in our county. Our graduation rate came out, it was 81.2%. Um, and those are great things that we have to look forward to within our county. So I do apologize for that going out the way it did. And, you know, and I know our teachers went out and we were prepared for that. We did prepare for 600, pretty close to 700 teachers. Um, staff went into buildings, some of them came back and told me they had a great time in, in the schools. They had enjoyed being there. Some of them came back and told me that there was an eye-opener. So I think it did prove to be something that, um, our district staff around this county got a chance to see what happens within the classrooms while we actually went in and teachers went up to make sure their voices were heard. So I thank them again for that. And Madam Chair, I'll turn that one over to you at this point. You want to take over?
Yes. And I would just like to say as well that, you know, throughout that weekend, with the communication being as it was, it's unfortunate, um, that we did that. And Superintendent Byrd and I chatted throughout the weekend. And our main concern, um, after that was communicating, um, how she really feels. It's one thing to send out an email that says X, which is factual. It's another thing to send out an email, which she did on Thursday, that showed her heart, her compassion, her sensitivity. But the bottom line is, um, we're very excited that those people that took off, regardless of the numbers, went to Tallahassee and lobbied on behalf of all of us. We couldn't all go. I could not go that day. But my fellow board members, my colleagues, some of them were able to get on the bus with the teachers and go to support a very important effort in our county, which is to raise awareness of the lack of public education funding, not only to Polk County, but around the state. And it warmed my heart to know so many could go and represent us because I could not. So I instead requested, as did other colleagues on the board, how can I, I'm staying back behind. What can I do to help? So we, some of us got assigned to schools. And I spent the most amazing day in a classroom. So we're excited that those that did go, did. And it's unfortunate that maybe some felt scared after the email and didn't go. But for those who did go and participated, thank you for taking the time and the effort that you did to take your time out of your family. Because, I mean, it was a whole day, early morning till late night. I mean, others can speak up about it. That's a huge commitment when you have possibly a significant other and children. To, uh, everybody's got to support that teacher that took off that day to help with the family and everything else. So, um, I'm excited that we were able to pull it off, the district staff and all the volunteers. The numbers were large Saturday when we spoke, Sunday, Saturday, Sunday. But the teachers went and they did. And guess what? We were noticed. We were noticed. And I had one person, I saw one post on Facebook that said, I'm here, I am not afraid of you, meaning Tallahassee, because I were for Polk County schools. To me, that summed it up. So I just want to say mistakes were made in communication. And that's why we titled this piece Communication. But as we all do, we've all made mistakes, guys. And I've had so many people email me and I've been able to respond little by little. I'm almost done with the responses. Um, but I think we need to move on. As she put eloquently in her email last Thursday, we need to move on, we need to work. Because the next step is, and I've had discussions with Stephanie Yocum, um, where do we go from here? That's great. Everybody took off. We went to Tallahassee. We did what we had to do. We represented Polk. But you come back home and what? Your pay is still the same, your benefits are still the same. What did we accomplish? So in my heart, the next step for this board, and again, I'm only one out of seven, is for us to talk about what is the next step in helping with teacher raises, benefits, all of that. Do I have the answer here for you today? I don't. I'm communicating because I feel that it's important. So we are going to, with Superintendent's blessing, we've talked. Ms. Yocum asked if we could for the next board meeting coming up next week, if we could move our location to a larger venue because she has some 300-plus people coming to tell us their story and why they went to Tallahassee and why was it important. So I would like to honor that request and Ms. Byrd agreed that we should. So I wanted to publicly tell you, we're working on that. We, we don't have a venue as of today, but we're working on it and we'll have someplace by next Tuesday. Additionally, we've talked about what are some of the things people are going to be coming up and speaking, not only about Tallahassee, but they want to know, board, what are you going to do? How are we going to work on this? I don't have that answer. This is a collective board. But I do know someone has thrown out the word referendum. So I can't give them an answer on Tuesday. I want to listen. I want us to do our research. And I would like us to put on our agenda for the next work session, February 11th, I want us to talk about referendum, the resolution that we did. Um, and Mr. Bridges is working on that for us to get us the information so that I can send it out to y'all so we can make an informed decision. So I think that's really important, whether we do it 2020, 2021. I don't know till I see what we did last time, because I've slept since then. So let's get that, let's get the information. And I want to hear from our teachers and the folks that are going to come. And then we, as a board, have a work session on it, so we have time to look at it. I know that Ms. Yocum is going to be getting some information together she shared with me. And I think collectively, we, as a seven-member board, I think, can make a really good decision on how to move forward. And I know there's a piece of it with Mr. Perone, and I'm going to get to that in a minute. Um, but I know we got to have some conversations because, you know, you're our, our budget guru. So, um, that's really important to me. So on the communication side, I feel, um, that we need to continue to communicate with one another to the extent of the law I say that. I support our superintendent wholeheartedly. Um, a mistake was made, but guess what? I make them every day in my world, you know? We just got to learn from those mistakes and move on and be strong and be together. And that's what I'm asking each of you to do. Let's rally behind Mrs. Byrd. Let's accept the apology that was given publicly. And let's move on and communicate with one another so that this doesn't happen again. And so I think we've made a lot of really great strides. I know her heart, um, and I know how much she loves children and what a great ambassador she is for our district. And I just ask us to move on and let's heal. Um, and let's look at ways to support our teachers, try to get better salaries, better benefits, and truly take that initiative. And I would look forward to our, our, getting some data, which I will share with you when we receive it, from all the different pieces, and then looking at a discussion at our work session on February 11th regarding that. So, um, that's kind of where I'm at as of today. So I, I hope you'll work with me on this.
I have a question about the referendum.
Yes.
We've discussed that, I think, multiple times about, um, and so I'm glad you're putting that back on there to talk about. I know the, they, we've talked about the years and when people think we should do it and we shouldn't do it. But, um, I'm looking forward to that conversation because in, I am, I will go on record saying I'm not supporting a referendum right now until we can prove to the public that we have, we are at every corner of this district spending dollars, um, in the most conservative method. And the public's, whether we're doing that or not, the public's perception is that we are not.
I understand.
And so what can we do as a campaign to show that before we start, we go back to the ballot?
Okay.
Because you don't want to lose the momentum and you're going to have to have the buy-in, which is going to take private money. We've always talked about this.
I know.
And, and we, it's not going to be in 2020. There's no planning time even to make that happen. So I don't want to, I don't want to promise them.
Right. I'm not promising anything. I'm saying we need to actually sit, talk. I want the info. Yes. And then we need to make a plan as a seven-member board, okay? Here's how we are going to go about doing that, if we choose to do it, when, how, who. There's so much discussed, the outside consult, there's just so many pieces. And I don't have all that for you today. That's why I'm hoping on the 11th, we can sit and do that. Go ahead. Ms. Fields?
When we, um, met with Mr. Nolan individually.
Yes.
I don't remember what the end result was to be on that. Was he supposed to do a summarization or what?
It's a good question.
Because I think he met with all of us, but I don't know when we had that. So I think that when, when you, when we have discussion, that needs to be, um, a piece of a.
Thank you.
Discussion.
When I, I did ask him that question, Ms. Fields, and he said that he would prefer to do that because once he makes it public, it kind of tells the world what the plan is to move forward. And that may, um, mean that there's some pieces of it that will make it more difficult to implement. But he said he would do it if we wanted to.
Can he do it individually, each board member?
Oh, yes. And he's happy to do that.
I think that for me, I would like to.
Prior to the 11th.
Have that opportunity.
You'd like to have that before the 11th. Can you, yeah, I need to find his card. Do you have his phone number?
I'll, I'll.
Okay. Can you? Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I, I found the meeting with him very informative. It, and it helped explain a lot of, uh, a lot of stuff. So.
Very knowledgeable, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will ask, let, let me get these other pieces in place. And then I will ask him to call each board member and discuss the results.
Or else.
Personally, or those that.
I don't know what his schedule is, but if he wants to do like he did before and schedule a time to come, and this is soon, we can arrange that and we could.
Is that okay with everybody? Consensus? Tell me.
My, my position on this is pretty clear, so.
Okay.
Can we add something to that on the 11th?
Hold on. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hold on. So we're not contacting all, we're gonna, can you reach out to Mr. Nolan and see if he can be here as part of the work session on February 11th? I think that's the, is that what the consensus is?
I think no.
No? What I missed?
Before, before.
Well, I think what we said was that he would talk to us individually.
Individually, before the 11th. No, she wanted as a group.
Well, no, last time he came.
Oh, okay.
I said all board members might not want to be involved in it. So the ones that want to have a conversation with them, I'm sorry.
That's okay, dear.
Is that, is that going to be any different than the conversation we had with him a couple of months ago? Okay.
But for some, it may clear up some questions.
It's all good.
No, I get it.
Perfect. Okay.
He, he, because we haven't talked about it further.
Okay, no, so there's, there's no, there's no new, new development outside of the new momentum.
Right.
Right.
Okay. That sound good? All right. Anyone else?
Well, for that, we talked about, okay, so the, from the outside, from what the teachers want to hear, whether it's money or not, they want to see a board that supports them. And so like we talked about this letter that now we're all sending individually. I think we need to decide, um, whether we are going to be the educator of policy to the public. Are we going to help the teachers in that fashion? Are we going to educate the public in legislation that is currently out this session? Do we feel that's part of our job? Some of us do, some of us may not. But if we're not going to offer them, these teachers are wanting to see this, you know, the money, the referendum. If, if it's not going to pan out, I don't want it to drop if that's the only thing that we're able to do for them.
To do.
You know, we need to, I think, this has been our role, and this is, I mean, and both of us are more active in it than others, is educating the public. If this, if the Senate bill passes where there's a third-party, you know, um, a third-party approval system for, for these big corporate charters, we will have no say in that. And the public needs to know that's coming. Now, was it our job to explain legislation, the pros and the cons, or not? I mean, that's a difference of opinion. But I think we need to be able to offer support in other ways besides referendums and money that may not be for another cycle of, of elections.
Okay, so would that be something we could talk about on the 11th? Are you going to?
I think so. I think so.
Bring some ideas? I mean, our PR department's really strong and is able to communicate so effectively. I don't know, I don't know where the line is, you know what I'm saying? Do we do something collectively, individually? I'm not sure. I'm willing to listen.
Yeah, we would see some direction.
Right?
On our involvement in that. Because I looked at like the state colleges sent something out today and it was, it was, it was actually, there's an association of, of them, and it was actually a graphic of this is what it means to us. Like this is why dollars are important. We have to do something, we haven't in the past, and the superintendent and I talked about this. Not that you're trying to make it a political, you really don't. You want to give the facts of this is what it means to you as a, as a teacher. This is what it means to you as a parent if this legislation is passed. And I think we could do it easily by kind of following maybe what some other organizations, education, post-secondary educations do. But I feel like it's offering the support to teachers from that angle because they don't, they're not, that's not their background to understand. They went to Tallahassee, many of them don't know what to do next. But if we were able to send them information or publicize, you know, this is how it will affect you if this happens. The reason you're being paid this way is because of legislation. Then they could be the arms in the community to keep the message going.
Okay, so how, how do we do that? Who, who can put that together, that information? Do we have?
It would be.
The PR work with Wendy.
Yeah, with Wendy, yeah.
Okay. All right, great. Okay. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
It, it may even be helpful to have almost like a FAQ page on the website for a session where some of the things that Wendy sends us in our weekly updates can be updated weekly of this, you know? These are the six bills we're watching. This one has passed committee, this one's not passed committee. And then a brief synopsis of this is what it means if it goes into effect. Just so that they can kind of see what's happening.
That may be a good starting point. I have seen those from Wendy. So that might be something I can use the basis.
Could we? Because I, I think that's very educational. Thank you, Lisa. That's really great.
I mean, just listening to teachers, they want it, you know, great, you're going to work on a referendum for 2024. What are you doing today?
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that to some extent, there's been some disagreement over how much we're going to talk about. Like, there, there are lots of things we all oppose, it seems like, but there are only some of them we're willing to talk about. So I think it is important to get a product together. This is what I do in my other life.
Right.
I just sort of herd together committees for, for messaging. Um, so I think it probably makes sense to have a baseline doc, document that we can look at and add things or.
Sure, subtract.
Or, or debate over, um, you know, so I think, because, I'm sorry.
Are you, once?
No, I mean, I would, I would recommend, yeah.
Rachel and Wendy get that together?
Right, correct. Yeah, yeah.
Run by you if that's kind of what you said you do in your other, I mean, help me here.
No, 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 I'm, no, but I.
I'm sorry.
I was just using as an example. No, no.
Is it?
I, like, what I, what I, what I, what I'm, what I'm saying is create a product.
Yes.
Rather than us try to debate the product.
Yes, that's right.
And then you can send it out with your own.
And then we, and then we, and, you know, and we can haggle over. Because we've had some disagreements on these exact discussions in the last few months.
Okay.
We're not completely united on what we actually want to, want to say.
Right. So that they would then, Rachel and Wendy would collaborate possibly with Mr. Perone and then bring us something on the 11th so that we can further discuss options. That's what I'm asking for. It's not just the refer, it is what else can we do? What are other ideas?
I mean, to, to Ms. Miller's point.
Yes.
You know, they're talking about the third-party authorizer for corporate, like, those are kind of the things that probably should go on there as well. Not just, the whole rally wasn't just about fund, funding.
I know.
It was about the entire mo, model, so.
Understand.
And then each board member could put their own influence. You know, if it's going to affect the community I work with.
Yes.
Then I could say, this is how specifically. But we do need to make sure that Wendy's including more, because I had to ask her about a couple of bills that she didn't give us information on. She didn't know that we would be interested in. So I would want, I mean, she knows the hot button topics. I would want an overview of, of the education bills.
But they just either create some, some, something and we need to react to it.
That's unique.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay. And that's for our February 11th work session.
And I can, I'll, I'll forward you Rachel FSBAs. I don't think ours necessarily needs to be, they do one like every day. I don't think ours necessarily needs to be that in-depth, but just kind of how they break it down with, this is the bill, this is the committee that it was, that type of thing. That may be helpful for.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you for agreeing to, to help kind of wordsmith it and get it in our hands.
So you're wanting prototypes or write-ups?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am, for us to start to discuss. You can subtract, whatever we got to do, but it's helpful when there's something in your hand that you can move forward with.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Appreciate you bringing that up. Okay, so, um, moving on.
Hold, hold, hold.
Yes.
Are we moving on? What are we moving on to?
I was going to move on to Polk Education Foundation.
No, yeah, I have, I have a couple of que, questions about what happened. There, there's some things I want to still clarify. There, there's some things I wanna still clar, clarify.
Okay.
And then one, one comment at the, the end. It's still a little unclear to me who reached out to who about this, like, did we, was it Wes, was it superintendent, was it someone else at our level who reached out about what was happening here to Tallahassee? Did Tallahassee hear about it and reach out to us? What, what's, can someone give me a little bit of a TikTok of the, of, of how that interaction happened?
I can tell you that when we left right before break, we were probably, we looked at our numbers and we think we were at around 600 and.
It was less.
It was less than that. But when we came back on the 6th and the 7th, it jumped up to like 6, 800 and it continued to go up at that point right around then. So understanding that we had already reached to Kelly Services and asked them to deploy the subs, which they were gonna deploy pretty much right around 600, they put an incentive, two hours extra pay and.
Two hours extra pay including travel.
And travel, for them to ensure that they were on the 13th. So when the numbers continued and we basically were exhausting Kelly, I knew at that point we were gonna have to exhaust everybody in this building and every building I have. The sheriff had already said they were gonna put extra security, but he also said they had 30 deputies that they could put in, they did not have certification of. So one, I'm placing teachers, not teachers, placing staff members in classrooms that are not certified, deputies in classrooms that are not certified. I then wanted to make sure that, okay, am I okay to put people in these classrooms while we allow the teachers to go up and of their choice and, and go to the rally, to make sure we have classrooms covered? And talking with the chancellor at that time, I expressed to him, I, I know that we need to make sure we have certified people in the classroom, however, I'm having to exhaust my entire district office and the sheriff's office, they do not have certification. And at that point, understanding the numbers that we were looking at at that day when I spoke to him, he went on and said, gave me the green light, okay, you're able to put those people in. And I said, I'll make sure that I have a certificated person where there's nobody with certification roaming through the classrooms to ensure that everything was going okay. That green light was given at that time and that was the conversation I had. We then moved forward from there. We planned, we called executive staff, we had met with them and told them that all their departments were going out. We actually placed all the departments and people into schools. We had placed that with the regionals and with the team. We spent days placing those people into the individual schools and where we weren't gonna put them. I know the sheriff wanted to make sure that they were more on the elementary side versus the secondary side. And we did that, we accommodated those people in that manner. So that's how we got everybody, we ensured that our buildings were safe, we sure that we had coverage in all the classrooms where there were openings.
Well, okay, so I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm interested in the interaction with, with DOE, and I've asked them these questions too, they're ignoring me. But like, the, the email that came back from, from Mears, the one that got sent out reads concern, the, the headline is concerning an organized failure to report to duty by potentially 1600-plus Polk County teachers. The opening text of it is, the pro, the proposed, the proposed failure to report represents a lack of commitment and focus on what is most important, the educational success of Polk County students of paramount importance, blah, 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 blah. Then it goes down and it says, per, per the stat statute, a concerted failure to report for duty constitutes an illegal strike under Florida law. Like, what's interesting to me, no other county got this. I'm trying to figure out how DOE got it in their heads that this was an organized failure to report. Like, what, who, who, who did they think was organizing it?
I can't answer, do you? I can tell you who I spoke to and that was the chancellor.
So, so, so.
I spoke to the chancellor about, I can't tell you the chancellor's talking to anybody, I'm not gonna put words in anybody's mouth.
No, no, that's, that's fair.
I spoke to the chancellor about my coverage.
About your coverage.
Here in Polk, about the schools.
Okay.
Because I always wanna make sure that it didn't come back on us, that I had people in school, in classrooms with non-certification.
Okay, and did, so, so, so you, so you never spoke to Mears per, personally?
Yeah, I would speak to Mears personally.
Yeah, the.
Did I send a letter? No.
Yeah, the, the general coun, 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 councilor, all right. And then, I guess my, did, did anyone, when, when this came down, did someone order, order us to send it out? Did they suggest we send it out? Can, can you characterize what, what, what the, what the direction was?
The email was sent to Mr. Bridges and I, and I did counsel with Mr. Bridges.
The, the language of the email said, talked about their obligation to notify all of the, all, all the employees that could be participating. So that, that came directly from their, from their email.
Okay, but.
But Mr. Mears reached out unilaterally. To my knowledge, nobody, I certainly did not contact him and to my knowledge, nobody else in the district.
So to the best of our knowledge, this is an email DOE took it on itself to send to us and that's, that's the best of our knowledge?
When, when he called, he indicated that he was going to be communicating with, with the superintendent and the union president and that they would be sending it to him.
Okay.
Right, and, and, and I might add, as soon as we got the email, after speaking with Mr. Bridges, I immediately flipped that, that email over to Ms. Yocum to say, this is what we received, have you, have you seen this? Before it went anywhere else.
So, and, and so, so just two, two sort of questions for the future in a sense. Yeah, I know, I, I appreciate the, the apology, I think ever, everybody does. Like, what would you have written if you had it to do over again? What, what is the context you, you, you would have put out around that?
Well, I did address that once before. I addressed that even in the press conference and the context would have been, this is not a threat from me, nor is this anything regarding. I, I put that out.
Okay, no, 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 okay, that's all right. And then, like, in a general sense, what, and, and this may, maybe, this is a little more complex question, what, what, what have you learned from this? Like, like, what, what, what did, what did you learn about our people? What have you learned about, like, how the public reacted? I mean, are, are there any sort of lessons to be drawn from this that you take?
I'm gonna take that one? Sure. Okay, I'll take that. Only because we've had so much communication. The lesson learned is this, and I've talked to many of you in this room about it. The lesson learned is this, when we get something on a Friday night late in a situation as crazy as it was going, we need to think before we react. I think this was a reactionary thing to try to protect. I don't think there was any intent to harm, to threaten, to do anything of the like. But I feel that we were compelled to do this. So the lesson learned is going forward, we are going to communicate more. We did not have an opportunity on that evening to discuss this message before the button was pressed to go. I applauded Ms. Yocum and the email that she sent out to our staff and the way in which she eloquently wrote it, you know, I thought was so nice and so gracious, saying, hey, if you're part of the 700, go, we're ready for you, you're there, you're rallying on behalf of all of us. But if some of you can stay that are not going, ones that are not going and are staying outside of school, could you please report to work on Monday? Okay, so had we had a communication, I think that message would have been a lot softer and more compassionate, which is what we've heard now in the last few days, last week. So that's the lesson learned. We all are learning how to communicate with one another and be a team. And that's my greatest goal for this year for this board. So I personally feel we've learned, we need to consult a few other people in our community, our inner circle, call it what you will, and make sure, hey, I'm thinking of this, here's possibly ramifications, what can we do? Cause I told superintendent, if it was me, I would have sent it, cause I'm required to or felt advised to, but I would have put a note in there similar to the note that was sent on Thursday. Am I being honest? That was my communication. Had I been able to know this is what's coming, what do you think? And I'm sure some of you may have said, that some of you have said to me, you would have said the same thing. So I think that's what we've learned and I think, you know, I think the conversation is mute. We've moved on, I want to heal. Our teachers know we support them, they know that superintendent supports them more than any of us, I do believe. And what's done is done. We just have to, we, we have to understand that we've made a mistake, I keep using that word, it's regrettable, but we gotta move on. So I, I hope I've helped to answer it. I, I don't, I don't wanna keep. Oh, yes, ma'am.
I, I, I told Superintendent Burd this and Mr. Hill, I, I, I think that the natural call would have been to the DOE. Did you not call them when the tornado hit?
That is what we do when we have to.
Right, okay, so, and I think what really happened was we had good momentum up in December with folks and it wasn't just teachers that were out, it was parents, it was, it was a whole bunch of people.
Everybody, I understand.
Right, and then you come back to school Monday and I can hear it now, everybody's standing there, you're going, you're going, you're going. And then Tuesday, oh boy, yeah, let's go. You know, and then by Wednesday, the ones that weren't going are looking around like, where are we gonna put all these kids? And I'm not going to school with five classes crammed in my room. I can hear Sarah Fortney saying that in her mind. So Sarah calls out.
Yeah.
And a few other people figured it out too and by, you know, Thursday, some of our principals, I got screenshots of it. You know, I need this, this and this, if you're planning on being out. And then the rest of the people said, I'll just won't let you know, and that way I don't let her listen to you and I'll call out Friday. That's what I think happened and how you could have planned for that is beyond me.
Right, no way.
You know, and I, I, I'm just gonna say, first, I wanna, I wanna focus on the positive. And that is, when we walked up to that civic center, our teachers, our staff were crying, physically crying, because people recognized them and had empathy for them.
Yeah, we actually, we actually have that, that, that video. Can we, can we show it? I mean, that's, I, I really like.
Let her film?
I'm sorry, yeah, sorry, I'm sorry.
You know, and I'm not concerned with the impetus of the email. Because I think in my heart, everything happens for a reason and it turned out better this way. That's what I think. I think it turned out because it shows, and I've said it before, the low morale and the high frustration of our workforce, period. And there's not a lot we can do sitting up here. These stacks of emails are the ones that came not just from teachers, but from the community supporting our teachers. That's where it bled out into what we needed, y'all. It can't be us looking like whiners. It can't. We have got to have community support. And from what I heard, the thing in, in Munn Park was very successful as well. You, you know, it, if I punished everybody that made a mistake in my classroom, my God, I wouldn't have any kids left. You know? I, I, I just feel like the can't we all just get along thing. But, you, you know, but we can do stuff that is free.
Yes.
Self-directed planning time back.
Yep.
Not keeping teachers out of their rooms four out of five days for planning. You know, all those things and, and I know Superintendent Bird said she wanted to go on a listening tour, I think, I think we've already said all we need to say here. Like, that, we, we saw that listening move to Tallahassee. I think we need to go on a fix-it tour. You know, I wanna fix it. So I'm gonna get off my soapbox and, and, you know, just say, you know, we all know, just, we do it better, public schools just do it better, we do it more with less. And yes, I hope you don't show me, I was looking a little sweaty.
It's okay, thank you. Do you wanna?
Yeah, I mean, I just, very briefly, none, none of this is about punishment in any way, it's, it's about clarifying what some of the relationships are, what, what directives were, were given.
Some people want to punish Billy. I've gotten the emails, what, you know?
But we're not going there.
We're not going there.
We're not going there, let's move on.
Hold on, I mean, can I, can I?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm, I just wanna make sure I understand what happened so that in the future, it's perhaps, doesn't happen this way. I'm, I'm agree completely with Sarah, I think this is like one of the best things that's ever happened to us. And if we can play the video for a second, I wanna show what our pe, our people got to feel and, and I think what I've had hearing from people coming back is just overwhelming happiness. So take a, take a look.
Question, is that all our people in red?
No.
That, that's all our people walking in.
The people chanting we are Polk are not, most of them are not from Polk County.
Right. Yeah, they're like lined up there.
Okay, I was just asking, is that, no, okay.
It took us so long to get in that by the time I got in, they were leaving.
I mean, I, I mean, I.
Really? Yeah.
I took that video, I'm, I was standing right there and like, the hair on the back of my neck stood up. It was much better in person, in person, it was loud.
I'm sure.
And, yeah, I think, what I'm interested in seeing us do, okay. Rachel, would you mind throwing the other picture up real quick? Is harnessing that spirit, har, harnessing all of that sense of positive momentum that, that we came back with.
That's what I saw. You can't scare me, I teach.
I mean, you know, I, I think that, that is a fabulous thing to hang in the, in the, in the hall, hallway of the administration buil, building. That to me, we're a tough place, man. I mean, like, like, we, we have some structural issues, we have the, the conversion charter layer, we have cha, challenges, we have financial cha, challenges, but we're scrappy. And, I mean, I, I just, it takes bravery to do what, what people do each, each day and I want us as a group to embrace that and, and, I mean, I, I'm serious about hanging that thing, thing up in the hall, hallway.
I took the picture from the original.
You did?
Is, is anybody, I mean, does anybody disagree?
Well, I think, I think if you can get it to staff and they can come up with something and put it somewhere, I think that's awesome. I mean, when I read that, it was like, I also read it a different way, you can't scare I mean, when I read that, it was like, I also read it a different way, "You can't scare me, Tallahassee, I work in Polk County, and we're gonna fight for what's right for our teachers and our kids," that's how I read, I was like, wow.
Well, right, no, I, I.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think that's.
I love that.
I think that's correct, but, but I think it's also, you can't, I mean, it's, it's a fearlessness about every, everything, which, 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 which I hope that will, that will embrace, and, and that's really what I'm interested, and, and, you know, I mean, this has been helpful, the, 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 the discussion just now was hea- helpful in getting a few, few things straight in my head. And, uh, you know, that, that's, that's really what I wanted to do.
We're, we're a microcosm of the state of Florida, I mean, we get touched by, what, eleven counties? Isn't that what, eleven, isn't it eleven, ten? You know, I stopped to go to the bathroom there in Gainesville, and Pinellas was coming up, and of course, my vehicle's still painted, but, uh, you know, they all had red, I had red, they're, "Hey, where are you all from, Pinellas, where are you from, Polk?" Polk! You know, they just automatically got like, you know, three charter buses full going to the bathroom, and we're like, hi! You know, it was, it was bizarre, because, you know.
Awesome.
We, we're leaders in academies, we're leaders in.
So many are.
We're, we're leaders in, in our superintendent, we're leaders in our board thoughts, we're leaders in trying to do mental health, you know.
We're blessed, to say the least.
Yeah, so.
Yes. Ms. Miller?
I just, um, first of all, how many, how many did we have out on Monday, 'cause somebody's asked me that, and I don't, do we have a number of teachers that were out?
You sent it.
And the Kelly incentives, is that from Kelly, that wasn't from us incentivizing, it was from the contract we have with them? So their, the funds went to incentivize was from them, that's good. Right, and if that, and I'm probably gonna ask through Iris, 'cause it's a wonderful system for requesting things, I'm going to ask for the Kelly, the Kelly contract, 'cause I've been asked to look at it, 'cause I said in that audience, when it was approved for eleven million or whatever, and there's a lot of questions about it, so this kind of started conversation about it again, so I'd love to look at it. Back to communication, you know, you're gonna get teachers on the Tuesday that, the teachers that were in tears, you know, they, all the, I think the biggest thing is when somebody was telling them they're proud of them, the entire state was saying, "We're so proud of you for being here," that's really all they needed. I mean, I hate to think as a board member, I've not been able to supply them with just the fact that, yes, you're needed, you create the data, you help, the, the data that drives the money, the students who create the test, to create the data that bring the grades, the grades that can bring the money, are all because of the teachers, and I think it is, they're hurting, and it's okay for them to be hurting.
I think I've been saying that, Lisa Miller.
And we, but we're gonna have to listen to that hurt.
Yes.
And it's gonna be by the, and it's not gonna be, I, I know you want it to be about the referendum, the people coming are hurting.
No, no, it's gonna be twofold, one, to tell the stories, I said, their stories, and then also ask, what can we do to help?
Right, and I think, so we have to listen to that, as a board, and they want a board that's active, active in the community, engaged in the classroom, active in politics, they want people that feel like are standing with them, so that's what you're gonna hear on next Tuesday. And I'm proud to, you know, say, "I'm trying," you know, tell me what to do. The people that turned up in Munn Park, I think, by the videos I saw, you're right, the community is finally listening, and if we don't start talking more to the community.
We need to capture that.
Outside of education, because you can't argue with somebody that teachers are the enemy, they'll, they'll fight you, and they're, they haven't had kids in school in twenty-five years. And so I think we need to garner that, that, um, you know, that community support and carry it, and so this is a great opportunity for us. The communication, yes, as a board member, I would like to see, I would have liked the board to been notified, I would have liked better communication, and I think we're, I mean, I don't, I'm supposing in the future that that will be what happens, we'll have more upfront communication about what to expect. Because as a board member, I had nothing, I'm calling Wes from a state meeting I have to step out of, they keep wondering where I'm going, because I'm trying to clarify what's happening with the legal aspect, so I can give good information, but I, I would like to see better communication. But it's okay for people to be upset with us, it's okay for them to be upset with Tallahassee, but it doesn't, and also, it doesn't mean we're running, 'cause I'll tell you the communication piece, I got lots of calls on Sunday after church and yesterday to tell me that those people don't want our superintendent, they wanna get rid of her, I had somebody at my church, they were at my church telling me, they were in my community telling me, and I wanted to speak to the people that keep that message going, you are hurting us, you are hurting the superintendent, you are hurting us as a community.
Yes.
Stop, like, before you make the seven phone calls to pass along information that you're not really sure who the "they" are, call the board members. Pick four of us that you think you can trust, and call us first. It's not, I can't imagine being the superintendent and thinking, "Oh my God, you know, here they come," who's "they"? Do you know what I mean? Like, we've got to do better with supporting as a group, we don't all have to think the same, we have different views, Sarah and I, you know, we don't always agree on everything, but we've got to, the teachers cannot see us acting as children on this board. We have got to move forward in one capacity behind these, these teachers that do it every day, do stuff I couldn't do, I couldn't be in that classroom. And so I think that's what we're gonna hear on Tuesday, we, we want, we're gonna listen, you're hurting, how can we help you, how do you want us to help you? And how can we do this together, it's not you versus them, it's not staff versus us, it is a, unless we can get it together as a unified front, you're gonna keep having these things bubble up, and it's bad.
But, and the second half of that, I agree with you, one hundred percent.
Right.
But, and I agree that we have to work together, that's what we're hopefully gonna be doing. The other thing is to rally also publicly, privately, on phones, on email, on, I don't care where your medium is, we rally behind our leader. That's the biggest piece, that we, us seven, need to show, because how does a teacher in a classroom say, "Yeah, okay, here, here comes my directive from staff," who is staff in their eyes? I'm sorry, there's fifteen of them, okay, but ultimately, this is their leader. And if we don't rally behind our leader, how on God's earth do you think they're going to, I mean, I think that's kind of what you're saying, I'm just making sure.
And I think you need to make the difference between, I can support the superintendent, and I can also criticize some things we do.
That's right.
There's, that is not, is not a night and day bucket or not.
No.
You can say, "This is, this was bad, what we did."
Right.
We had people worried they were gonna lose their pension and their jobs in tears for days, we have to answer for that. So we can say, you know, "This was bad, this is how we're gonna prevent from this from ever happening again." That doesn't mean I'm trying to throw the bathwater out.
No.
The baby with the bathwater, the superintendent out with the district.
But that needs to be said.
But there was knee-jerk reaction.
There was, yes, there was.
So we have, we as a board, though, have to continue to stand up, is what I, I agree with you, and say that, that we can respectfully disagree. We do it, okay, but we can respectfully disagree as well with our super, whatever, but at some point, I want us to learn that once we've discussed it and we're done, we need to move on, stop rehashing the same crap, excuse my French, all over again, I'm tired of it. If we're done it, we talked about it, we've said we gotta improve on communication, we've discussed some strategies to use going forward, and that's enough, let's move on, and when they come on Tuesday night, or if they're listening today, my message is the same, I support her, and will continue to support her, 'cause I hope someday when I mess up, that the six of you are gonna go, "Wow, that's Lori, okay, so she didn't do..." I mean, you know what I'm saying, 'cause I'm a human, we're human.
Right.
That's the element, we're talking about teachers and feelings, being human, but that's the piece, that all of a sudden, some people look at her and assume, "Oh my gosh, she's up on a pedestal," well, yes, she is, but she's human, and she's gonna make a mistake, and it's up to us to say, "Okay, we did it, here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna move forward with it, and you're right, we, can we get better, oh my goodness, can we get better?" That's what this is about.
The same tree that grows teachers in Paris, grows superintendents, let me just say that.
Yes, ma'am, that's a great way to put it, yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, we just heard from our academy folks that the number one, one of the number one schools, they need kids to have, and they go out and be in, and to be employed, is to be able to take constructive criticism and feed feedback, and, you know, I think that's, um, I, I think that's just a big part of my job, I'm, I'm never gonna not do that.
Sure.
Does it, like, that's, that's, yeah, I expect that to come, you know, I expect people to do, to do the same with me, we, we all have very, very important jobs, superintendent has a very important job, um, this board has very important jobs, and this is a much more, um, active, attentive public right now than we, than I think we've ever had for education, I'm really proud of that. And active and attentive sometimes means bump, uppity, but I'd much rather have that than, than stagnant and inattentive.
Sure.
You know, I, I think we all need to be willing to, to take some, some criticism, to listen, and to be honest about what, you know, about what we see that, that can improve, and, and that's, I think that's really all I can say.
Thank you for your input. Ms. Fields?
So, um, there was an article that had been in the paper about a petition signed by five thousand people wanting to get rid of our superintendent. And then a second petition was started, so there is conversation, and for us to think that conversation's not being had, that's just not the real world in which we live. Now, I don't know if anybody around this, um, table is a part of that, but the discussion is, is there, so we cannot close our eyes and act like it's not there, and so to have conversation like we're having now, a conversation that the chair had, I couldn't have said it any better, I think that, um, Ms., uh, Ms. Bird is a human being. Anybody at this table, if you're perfect, raise your hand, uh, if you're not, then you hope and pray that one day, when your grace is needed, that you'll be able to get grace, and you'll be able to get some mercy. And so, uh, Ms. Bird had apologized, what else can she do, God knows, I don't know, what else she can do, she's apologized, uh, she's genuine. Uh, I had someone who personally came to Girls' Inn, just wanting to make sure that Ms. Bird was gonna be okay, and that Ms. Bird is the best superintendent that she has ever seen for the district, and that she's willing to go into the classroom and roll up her sleeves and work hard, she does not just talk to talk, but she walks what she says. So I think we need to squash this, put this behind us, and if we want to have constructive criticism, that's fine, but not every time. I mean, you've got to find goodness in something, there are good things going on in this school district that's been going on for years. Some things we need to change, but some things we don't, and sometimes it appears to some of you all that we have done nothing good. Well, I just have to disavantage you on that, we have done some great things, and we need to work together as a team, are we always gonna agree? No, but at the end of the day, if majority says this is the way we're gonna go, then we need to just accept it, go on, and start bringing it back over and over and over and over again. We need to squash it and move on, for the benefit of who? Our kids, 'cause it's not about me, not about any of you in this room, it's all about the students that we serve each and every day, or it should be, and if it's not, we need to find us another job.
Thank you, Ms. Fields, Ms. Reynolds?
Um, I just wanna echo a little bit of what you and Kay both said, um, we are so blessed to have Superintendent Bird, and if, you know, she's going to make mistakes, she is a human being, and I think that we all recognize that, um, you know, I am, I know I'm a millennial, I'm never gonna be one to be all over social media, but as I've been communicating with teachers through email and other platforms the past few weeks, the biggest thing that I've highlighted, 'cause one of the biggest questions is, why did that email go out, you know, why, why do you think we shouldn't have taken it as a threat? And in explaining to the, you know, if you read the email, the only thing that we really have control over is not firing teachers. So we do have a legal responsibility to make sure that teachers are aware, the state just sent us this email, and there's three or four things in it that they're the only ones that have control over, so we have to make sure that our teachers are aware that there's not, you know, when we go up against the state, the state says that they can do something, and we can protect you the best we can. You know, the best way that I felt I could help to protect teachers on Monday was to make sure that I was in a school, covering a classroom, and making sure that no one could ever say that there was work stoppage in Polk County last Monday, which I think is a huge credit to our superintendent, that when that email came out, and well, before that email came out, she was going to make sure that there was no movies being watched, that it was true, work happening, um, I did reading and writing at Denison, which was a very eye-opening experience, um, but our seventh and eighth graders, their writing prompt was writing a letter to convince a parent whether or not teenagers should have social media, and one of the students wrote on his paper, which I thought was, um, very funny, that if he didn't have social media, if he didn't have Snapchat, he would have never known he needed to wear red district back then, which I thought was very telling, that, you know, they, they are engaged, and they do care. Um, there's definitely some lobbyists in seventh grade at Denison, I'm, Wendy better watch out, 'cause they're coming.
They're coming at the right.
But I just think that it's important to, you know, many of the phone calls that I received last week from community members were, "How can we support Superintendent Bird?" because we realize that she's human, and that this is, you know, it's a tough situation, and we wanna make sure that, we don't wanna burden her, 'cause we know she's getting a million emails and phone calls, but we also wanna make sure she knows that she's supported, so I, um, thank you for making sure that our, our kids were protected, and that our teachers were able to go and, and talk.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds, Mr. Wilson?
Madam Chair, I have some comments, um, they will, will not be brief, um, I, but it has nothing to do with the superintendent, I, Superintendent Bird and I have talked, and we're good, it has nothing to do with that, it really has to do with the rally in Tallahassee, and I'm happy to just talk about it now, or I can save my comments for board comments, wherever you prefer.
Okay, could you, it's up to you, really, but we'll have board comments at the end.
I can wait.
Well, I mean, just, I don't wanna do it now, so that it's, it's all of a piece.
Perfect, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm fine, it doesn't matter.
I receive a lot of emails, texts, telephone calls, just like all of you did, of course, and, um, let me say, as an elected official, it's important that I get those calls, I'm with Mr. Council, and I think it's important that we receive that criticism and that we get those calls, and I appreciate them, I value them, I, I ask that you keep them coming to me. The one concern I had was that some of them were threatening, not threatening in the sense they were threatening bodily harm, but threatening in the sense that they wanted you to go from office, and let me say, that's always the prerogative of our constituents, so that can go without being said. What was troubling to me is that anybody who has watched our workshops, anybody who's been to our school board meetings, anybody who has read the paper, always knew what I stood on this issue, I've never wavered as it relates to where we stand with Tallahassee and our teachers, I've always supported our teachers fully and completely, so it was a little bit troubling to me that there were folks who were, who were threatening me because of my lack of participation, I suppose, and I found a little bit troubling. Let me, let me just offer this, um, it, it's important to do your own research and not to get caught up in social media, it, you can't believe everything you read there. I, um, went through a very, um, difficult, uh, very personal and, and painful loss during that period of time. I can't honestly say that it would have changed any of my actions, but I, I really was in no place to be, to be participating at that point in time. And so those are things that we, we, we can't always be aware of, so please keep the emails coming, most of them, the vast majority of them, were incredibly professional, they were respectful, and I appreciate those so much. I'm a broken record, I know that, here we go again. Um, in the early seventies, the United States was the leader in worldwide education, both at the K through twelve level, as well as the college level. Today, we're still the leader in, in, uh, worldwide, at the college level, we've fallen well off the pace at the K through twelve level relative to other, other countries. So what caused that, what happened along the way? In the mid-seventies, the federal government started, started implementing a series of laws that, um, introduced non-traditional students into the traditional classroom environment, that was a good thing, it's important that we provide a quality education to all of our students. But that required two things, it required a paradigm shift in the way we deliver education, it required a shift in the way we define educational outcomes, that shift never occurred, it also required exceptional resources. The federal government provided less than twenty percent of those resources, is that correct, Ms. Miller? And they, they relied on, on local and state governments to provide the rest of those resources, in the state of Florida, that means the state of Florida, because it's local, uh, local, uh, counties and communities have very little control over funding, that, those resources never came. So we didn't get the resources, there was no paradigm shift, and that created a vacuum, that vacuum was filled by an organization called Excellence in Education nationally. Now, they have a, a sister organization that kind of controls things here in the state of Florida, but Excellence in Ed has a chokehold on education in this country, and their original motives were good, they were well-intended, they wanted to improve education in our coun- in our country, in our society, but they implemented a model that was disastrous, absolutely disastrous for all of us. It's a model that assumes that non-traditional students, students who don't learn in the abstract, can learn in, in a traditional classroom environment, that somehow they can learn in an abstract environment, it's just not realistic. So then they said, "We're gonna, we're gonna test those students, and we're gonna assess the teachers, uh, the students, and we're going to penalize teachers and schools and communities and districts and parents and students if they're not performing." Now, let me put that in a different perspective, let's assume there was a business that was highly successful here in this country, and they said, "We wanna go, we wanna start doing business in a foreign country, but we're not gonna understand, we're not gonna take time to understand that culture, we're not gonna take time to understand the values, we're not gonna take time to understand the government and the processes, we're gonna go to a foreign country, we're gonna implement our business model there, we're gonna tell our employees they have to meet the same outcomes, the same outputs they did in this country, without understanding anything about that culture, without adding additional resources, and by the way, if you don't do it, we're gonna penalize you." That company would lose employees in droves, as we see happening with our teachers in the state of Florida. It's the same model, and it's not working, Betsy DeVos said this past summer, "It's not working," I think the word she used was appalled. So, we have professional employees, we have professional educators who want to go to Tallahassee and share their voice, they want to go to Tallahassee, they wanna tell our state leaders, "Hey, this isn't working, we need your help, we need to find another solution, it's the right thing to do." It seems a little alarming, um, it should give us all pause, that in return, our state leader said, "Well, that may cost me your job." I think folks should be alarmed by that. We, um, I, I think what was most stunning to me is that there were concerns about, that we would have students in a classroom with substitute teachers. I, I appreciate our substitute, our substitute teachers, that's, that's something to be concerned about, but consider this, the model that's imposed by Excellence in Ed ensures that we have hundreds of students in classrooms for weeks and months at a time with substitute teachers, so if we're really concerned about substitute teachers, our leaders in Tallahassee can do something about that. Immediately, they can do away with the general education component of, of the, of the teacher certification, and that would ensure lots of teachers, a lot more teachers, permanent teachers in our classrooms for our students, and that, that particular component of, of the general, of the... And that, that particular component of, of the general, of the teacher certification has no identifiable value. I've not seen anyone yet who can say what the value of that part of the certification is. So that, just by doing away with that, we could solve that problem immediately. That's something that our leaders in Tallahassee could do. Let me close with this. Our colleges and universities are doing a wonderful job, uh, relative to the rest of the world. And here's what they've done. They're providing for our teachers differentiated teaching techniques. They're providing innovation. They are, are helping us find that paradigm shift that we always needed but was never funded. But Excellence in Ed's model is stifling that innovation. It's a model that will not allow that innovation flourish because it's a model that assumes that all students will necessarily learn in an abstract environment, in a traditional learning environment. So we have an organization that over the past 12 years has not provided any, any identifiable, verifiable improvements in education. We have our colleges that have demonstrated an ability to perform and we're not listening to them. Instead, we're listening to an organization that hasn't served us well. So I would offer this, if we're looking for a solution, that's where we need to focus. We need to send the message to our leaders to disconnect, disassociate, move away from Excellence in Ed and their, and their sister organization here in the state of Florida, disconnect from that model and start trusting the professionals in the organization because that's how we're going to be a world-class, a do, a provider of, of education or provider of world-class education here in the state of Florida. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I should have brought my wand. We could just make that happen.
Pixie dust. All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Wilson. I appreciate that. A lot of insight. Ms. Miller?
I just have one, um, last thing. Uh, Ms. Fields referenced something she read in the paper and that's the first I've heard of it. And I, when I read it in the paper and I was looking up, you know, trying to figure out what's going on. And from the teachers that I met in Tallahassee, if we're going to do a listening tour or a fix-it tour, I like that fix-it tour. He just said, we got to start at the east side of the county. It is Haynes City and Davenport because they're hurting, they're overcrowded. Um, the support, I mean, they're everywhere. We have problems. But it seemed like the, the push, they drove from Haynes City to Munn Park to be devolved. I think we are missing out on yours. I think that side of the county is in the most desperation, I think, than any of them. So if we're going to do something, I don't know if the superintendent decides to do that, I think you should start up there and move back this way. And plus, they also don't know you. I mean, as well as the people that live, that you live amongst and here in Lakeland and Bartow and you spend more time probably here. That community, half of them, half of them live there and work in Orlando. They don't spend socialization. There's no, a lot of, there's not Kiwanis and Rotary and, and really dug-in organizations there yet. But the kids are in our schools. I don't know how to meet them in the middle. But the largest percentage I heard from were from that area. I have no idea. Um, so if there's a focus, I would, if you had to start somewhere, I would start up there, over there. Are you over, up? You're over and I don't know.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Is this all in communication?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I, I can do either way.
Yes.
Appropriate for me to say few words.
Yes, of course. Absolutely. I would welcome that.
Um, I would just like to offer from, from a perspective, an educator's perspective, 25, 26 years. 26 years in the trenches. And, uh, over that time, we've had some, what I would consider remarkable leaders. So I'm very thankful today that the board, uh, has shown your support for Ms. Bird because Ms. Bird is one of the finest leaders I've ever had the privilege of serving with and serving for. I think when we talked about the soft skills, you know, the ability to handle constructive criticism, I think she is the apex in the model for that. She genuinely cares about others. Not only does she have the talent, the skill, the ability, the knowledge, the experience, but she has the heart and she leads with the right motives. And so rallying to her today, I think, was a very, very positive thing for our entire district, for every, every one of our employees, certainly for our teachers. If we're going to rally the teachers, we need to rally to our superintendent because there is no greater champion for teachers and for our employees and for this district than Ms. Bird. And I'll go back to what I was saying about the fact that she models those leaderships. Really, it's leadership principles. How to look adversity in the face and remain, uh, keep your integrity and your honor intact, not to, uh, not to give in to the emotion of the moment, but to seek to understand rather than to be understood, to listen to the criticism, to look in the mirror first before she points the finger anywhere else and really look at herself and be introspective. And then to demonstrate humility, to own mistakes. As a leader who follows a leader, I tru- I just appreciate the way she goes about that. And so I'm privileged to see what goes on behind the scenes with her. And what you see here is what you see there. Honor, integrity, leadership, passion, remaining focused on those things that matter most to our students, our teachers, our staff. Uh, the commitment that she makes to that is incredible. So I want to thank the board today for your support of Ms. Bird. I certainly know that many of us that, that are working with her and under her leadership appreciate that. In addition, um, I also appreciate the fact that we've all now, after the dust has settled, realized that that Monday was a wonderful day and a powerful day for our system in that while we supported our teachers that went to Tallahassee, there was also a dynamic thing happening here amongst everyone, that, that sense of team connectedness and working together to support our cause. And so we, you know, we do value very much our teachers and we value every employee. And so I appreciate what I've heard from the board today. And, uh, it's very encouraging and hopefully, I believe it will also encourage all of our employees. And, um, you know, I, I don't think I have any other words to say other than she's remarkable, absolutely remarkable.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Appreciate your, your kind words as well. Ms. Bird?
Yes.
We love you. Hang in there. Okay? We're all humans. We all make mistakes. We're going to move on. So. Okay. Are we done with communication? Anybody else have anything they want to add, subtract, multiply or divide? Okay, let's move on then. Thank you, board members. And I appreciate, um, the way in which we've had a really great discussion today. Um, and I appreciate the respect and the way in which everybody has communicated how they feel because it certainly makes a difference, I know, to me. Um, when we can agree to disagree, but do it respectfully, tactfully, and then move on. So our next item, information item, this is yours, right? Polk Education Foundation? Yes, ma'am?
It's just the Polk Education Foundation. And, um, please excuse Susan's absence. She is ill, um, at this time. And this, this information item is just some information that has to go on the board, the Polk Education Foundation Board, and has already gone before them and we're putting it on our agenda to make sure it is finalized and it goes forward.
So that'll be on our, um, on our board meeting agenda next week, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I just want to offer a, a quick comment. In addition to reading the financial statements themselves and the reports and the financial statements, it's also important to read the management letter because there's a lot of good information in there. And this was a perfect audit. And, and so I just want to commend Susan Copeland and her team and, uh, for a great job they're doing. And it's reflected, I think, in this audit.
Yeah, I just want to say the same. I've visited PEF multiple times and there's a, I didn't realize how small of a staff they have to take on such a large amount of work and fundraising. Um, and so I appreciate what they're doing there and I, I would like to support them. This is another, um, another example of, of quality, you know, services that we're providing.
Amen.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Miller.
Tiny but mighty.
Yes. And thank you for serving this year, Ms. Fortney, as our liaison to the Polk Education Foundation. Okay. Any other comments or questions or anything on the audit? Okay, moving forward, next part of this is old business, but it's very important business. Um, I believe each of you have received, um, last week, I asked our employees, uh, both, um, Ms. Matthews and Mr. Bridges to forward you, um, some information. When it came to my attention in December that their contracts had not been, um, completed and sent to the board for review, I personally requested that they do a due diligence and provide comparable information for other districts. And secondly, to also put together what I call a red line copy because I'm often sitting trying to go, this is now, this is what we're think- try to put it together. So hopefully y'all received that. I know there were some issues with the red. You had to click on it or whatever. Um, and hopefully you've had an opportunity to review each contract. So I'd like to take them one at a time and see if you have any questions. Um, I made sure to ask each of you through Susan to communicate directly with the employees if you had questions because they would be much better suited certainly than I to answer them. I understand that some of you, um, did that, which is great. I think at this point where we are is if there's any additional questions that you would like answered today, now would be the time to ask. Um, and then it will be, this contract as redlined would be brought forward after all the questions have been answered and everybody's ready. Um, it will be brought before us at the January 28th board meeting next Tuesday to be voted on. So today is not for the purpose of saying, I like it, I don't like it, I'm going to vote. I, that's not where we're at here. We're, we're, we're in, um, information mode and then it's up to you next week to determine how you want to vote. So at this point, let's take them one at a time. Alphabetically, it would be Mr. Bridges first. Y'all have had an opportunity to review. Are there any questions regarding the redlined areas that you have had answered or need answered or want more information on that we can provide you before next week? Feel free to speak up if you do. You won't. You have to click on it or do something weird. I forget what. Mine came in gray, so here we are.
Yeah, that, yeah, it's like a-
What is it?
Click, click it, you go up and there's an edit function and then you, I mean, also the red lines are kind of way down, like they're in the, the termination area.
Right. Okay. All right. So any questions about Mr. Bridges' contract that, yes, sir?
Just to that effect, I, I, I think this is the same for both of them. Like, there was some, like, looked like kind of cosmetic changes for the, the term termination stuff. Like, that didn't seem to be that significant. I just was curious if they were making it line up with statute or like that.
It actually is significant. Uh, previously, there was no termination for convenience language in the contract. So this, this, uh, without cause language is new. It is similar to the language in the superintendent's contract. And, and that is language that comes from the statute. If there is going to be a provision for, uh, for termination without cause and severance pay, this is the language that lives from the statute.
Yeah, I mean, apologies. That, that's significant. It was like, so there's some of the verb, the verbiage.
That was a significant provision, yes, sir.
Okay. So any questions for Mr. Bridges or hopefully you've answered?
Can I just ask a question about the, your department as a whole? I, in the comparison, it was, and I know we've talked about this before, but it was a little eye-opening to again see that, you know, we have 104,000 students. The only other district that has one person doing your job is a district with 27,000, Elachua, which has 27,000 students. Um, I know we use out of house quite a bit to do some of those other contracts. Is that something that is still working? Do we need to look at shifting some of that?
That is a, that is a very good question and it's a conversation that, that I have had with, with the superintendent, with Mr. Wilson and with, with Mrs. Cunningham. At some point, it would be a good idea to consider expanding that department. And, um, Ms. Miller asked a question this morning about, about Palm Beach, which is not shown here. They're a little different. They have 12.
Yeah.
You know, and, and they still use outside counsel to do their, to their litigation. But there is potentially some savings there. And as you know, we, um, my, my paralegal is, is actually a licensed attorney. I've got her functioning as a, as primarily as a, as a paralegal, but she has some capabilities, uh, that are, that are force multipliers. And, uh, the superintendent has suggested that we might be able to have a conversation in this year's staffing plan to, uh, to, to, to upgrade that. So, uh, yes, that is, that is on our scope. Of course, it is a budget item and it's always, uh, always tricky when you're, when you're adding people and especially at the professional level like that. But that is a very good point. And I think there is potentially some good savings to be had by bringing in some of that functionality that we, that we could do in, you know, just.
Well, that was, I guess that was really my question. And I realize that the public doesn't have a copy of this. So just to kind of what we're looking at, Brevard has less students than us and has three in-house attorneys. Orange has just about double and they have eight. Um, Pinellas has a couple thousand less and they have three. Elachua only has 27,000 students and they have one. Broward has 260,000 students and they have eight. St. Lucy only has 40,000 students and they have two. Lee has just under 100,000 and they have three. So it just is very-
There, there's potentially some savings there. And, and as, as we get ready for that presentation, I'll have numbers for you on what we, what we, what we project those might be.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to the point of that conversation, I think something to, to, to add. The legal services that the superintendent requires and the legal services that the board requires are not always identical and, or at the same time. And I think we also have an unusual structure with, with, with the way Boswell and Dumlat works. I'm not sure, like, how to get an apples-to-apples out of this because we're a peculiar a- apple, I, I think. Um, so I would, I would welcome having that discussion, but not so much from the terms of should we expand, but laying out what we actually do, who, you know, who's the superintendent's first call if she needs something? Who's our first, you know, like, like those kind of things. Um, I would like to be clear about that because I think it's a little confusing and I'm not really content to say that we're doing it with less, I mean, we're clearly doing it with less staff. But do we have people who are essentially acting as, you know, like, that's, that's fine. I, I need to understand more about that.
I think that's great and, um,
I think Ms. Fields was up first.
Before I forget it, just let me say, what about, would you be able to prepare something for an upcoming work session?
Yes, ma'am.
To discuss, probably not February 11th, maybe the one after that, if you have enough time to give us a little bit of an under, a, a better understanding of your department, how it runs and, you know, the second issue to me is that individual in your office.
We, we've done that in the past, but it has been, it's been three or four years since we've done it. I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend, for that. Okay, I'm sorry. Who was next? Ms. Fields?
Okay, so historically, we've been having this discussion for years about whether or not they're using an added position. And, uh, as a result of that, it was decided that we were not going to add a position in its entirety, but we started using John, um, Murphy more. I think 20 hours a week was what we had authorized. And so my question to you was, is how, how often is John being used as it relates to those 20 hours? Is he being used?
Yes, ma'am. Um, it, it varies from, from month to month and with projects. Um, but I'll be happy to include that in the, in the report. It is, it has been a very, a very beneficial relationship, especially to the extent that, that they have corporate knowledge going back to 1939 and, and nowhere, as Bubba Boswell might have said, where a lot of the goats are tied. So it's, it's been very beneficial. But, um, but I'll, I'll be happy to include that in the, in the analysis. Yes, ma'am.
First of all, the goats are tied. What's, what's that mean?
That seems unfortunate for the goat.
I don't understand this. Okay. So me, I need to understand your role better because I, as a new board member, they're asking me to vote on a contract. you're asking me to vote on a contract that I've, I mean, other than being in the audience and working specifically with families and ESE issues, we don't have a lot of, we haven't had a lot of history. So the mediation and litigation, you handle any of that, or it's all outsourced?
The tort litigation, the actual, if we're trying cases in court-
Right, right.
Typically, that is handled by outside counsel.
Okay.
There, I have in the past handled some of our small claim stuff and the small civil stuff that has come up that does not require litigation support. When we mediate cases, I work with our trial counsel, but I'm hands-on, and the authority is delegated to the superintendent and myself to resolve those cases up to the tort cap. So I have hands-on involvement in every tort case through the resolution of that case.
And you, and I know you advise the board, but you also advise the superintendent? Like, we talked about you had done some advising over this issue, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Typically, I can advise the superintendent and staff on any items that would not be a conflict. So, for instance, if there's an employee discipline matter, once a disciplinary decision is reached, then I can't further advise the superintendent or her staff on that, because there's a due process issue. I could not prosecute that case and then advise the board on that case. But up to that point, routinely speak with staff on employee matters, on student discipline matters, on ESE matters, yes, ma'am. It's the, we are, we're very careful in any situation where the superintendent and the board may end up with different interests and roles in the case to make sure that there's no overlap on that.
Of who you're advising, one or the other?
Right, so once a decision is made, for instance, to discipline an employee, the superintendent would counsel with an outside attorney who would handle the prosecution of that case.
And a lot of the policy, DOE policy and some of our law, I mean, some of what we have to adhere to is very, is led by interpretation. So you're relied on for that interpretation.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Fortney? Do other districts that have multiple lawyers, does their superintendent have a lawyer?
Frequently.
Okay, so they're one of those eight?
Frequently, typically-
Or two of those six?
There are different models, but frequently, if you have a second lawyer, that might be a staff attorney for the superintendent.
Okay.
And then if they had a third lawyer, that would end up back on the board side typically. But there's no rule on that. But yes, frequently-
It's whatever works for the district.
Frequently, when you have multiple attorneys, you'll have one of those attorneys who has a direct report for at least a portion of their duties to the superintendent of the schools. And you'll notice that in Elachua and St. Lucie County, on the chart that I provided you, in both of those districts, the in-house attorneys are direct reports to the superintendent.
Gotcha.
So it varies from district to district.
Can I ask Iris for what we spend? I'm asking if I can ask Iris, because that's obviously what we do. But I would like to see, I understand your salary and what you showed us, but I would like to see how much money we spend on the outsourcing of legal.
Yeah, I think that's part of what we're gonna do, right?
Part of that analysis, yeah.
Yes, part of the analysis.
But we're voting on that after?
We're just voting on his contract.
On his contract, and then we'll be discussing how do we align that department. Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, Mr. Townsley?
And just a sort of philosophical, interesting point that kind of relates to everything we've been talking about. I mean, I think there is the elected school board, and then there is the school district. And they're not synonymous in a legal sense. And I think also in interests and who we answer to, all those kind of things. And I think it behooves us all to be thoughtful about thinking about how those interests differ a little bit and how they overlap, basically in everything we do, not just legally. Because, you know, people say shorthandedly, "School boards did this." You know, like, you know, it's a, that's a very, you know, short, shorthand way to say it. But I think it's certainly fair for the superintendent-
Yeah.
No, I mean, I think it's fair, I think it's fair for the not-elected staff for the superintendent to have the ability to interact with legal counsel that's par-legal counsel in the sense of, you know, I think that's definitely something we need to discuss.
Moving forward, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. Bridges. We appreciate you taking the time to provide the information to each of us. And now, we would like to, I would like to ask if anyone did, everybody received Ms. Matthews' information? And did you include, ma'am, the talking points?
Yeah, I-
You did sort of in your, in your, okay, all right. So I guess at this point, my question would be the same. Does anyone have any questions that they would like to ask Ms. Matthews based on the email that you received from her regarding her contract and salary? Ms. Fortney, I think your hand was up first.
I just am gonna see a pattern here, I think. Polk Education understaffed, the Attorney's Office understaffed, and I know this one's understaffed. And how they crank out these numbers and be so accurate and do all that is just beyond me. So that's all I was gonna say.
And you want Ms. Fields, yes?
Okay, so I know that we're not supposed to have any deep discussions about the contract itself today.
You can ask.
The salary, I just, I've already spoken to Ms. Matthews about this, and I cannot support an increase in salary, because we have not given any of our staff any raises. And even though Ms. Matthews has explained to me that this would not be effective until July 1 of 2020, I'm willing to come back at a later time and look at it, but not approve it as is now. So I just wanted to put a public statement. No reflection on our work performance, anything like that. I just don't think that if no one else is getting a raise, I don't think that Ms. Matthews at this time should get one. A salary increase, whatever you want to call it.
Okay. And I do know, in the research that you did, are you comfortable talking about it here for the others? You kind of went through that with me and why you felt, I understand the comparables. I'm thinking more to address her comments about how the raises have been given through the years. And would you like to just share that with everyone?
Yeah, as I explained, you know, this is for a new contract. And so my understanding, you know, in discussions with the board is that that was the directive that you wanted us to do, is to go and look at comparative salary information around the state and other districts. So that is the spreadsheet that you have, and it shows that kind of information. I did also explain that there was a new Florida statute that impacts internal auditors. And so there's gonna be changes come, you know, in that area, and some that have already been made. Polk is fortunate in that we have already, you know, met most of the requirements of that new law in that organizationally. The internal auditor reports directly to the school board, and that's for interns and so forth. And then the scope of work. Some of these districts are still, you know, working to get there, but some of them only do internal accounts audits, and they may report to the CFO and things like that. So I think you'll see a salary change as far as that goes. But even with that information, you know, you can see where my salary stacks up compared to those other districts. So I thought it was important with a new contract, and as that was the direction from the board, to get that information and negotiate that with the new contract.
Everybody pretty much understand how she went about doing that? And then, from what I understand, and it's a little bit weird, so we say that upfront, each of these individuals is also, and I don't want to confuse the issue, but they're also tied, I think, to a salary schedule along with our employees. So they have both been given raises since their last contract, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So in other words, if an executive level salary is X, and one of them is on that level, they receive that increase. So I didn't want people to think that they are completely ineligible and have been ineligible for raises, because those do continue. But now that it's a new contract for both, here was an opportunity, if we wanted to, to change those salaries accordingly. I just want to be sure everybody knew that.
Can I back up a minute?
Yes.
Because I had semi-same concerns as Ms. Fields did, but I also did not quite understand the salary schedule. I met with Wes, and he tried to explain it to me as far as-
It's crazy.
How it's autom, you know, it's different. It's not like, I don't want teachers to think, well, here they go, they're getting raises.
Right, right.
And it's not that kind of salary schedule. Wes, can you explain a little bit?
Our sal, we have separate contracts.
Yes.
But the increased provisions simply tied us to the standard administrative contract, so that if district-wide administration got a percent, we got a percent. So it was treated just like any other administrator in the district.
Okay.
So at this point, in order to bring this to the board next week, for Ms. Matthews now, I'm asking, because there was a salary increase placed into the-
Westin too.
Into the red, no, Westin, no. There was a salary increase, so I do probably need some direction. I mean, I hate to do this, but I have to do this, because if there's even one person, we don't want to completely not approve your contract because of the salary piece and not because of the contractual piece. That's where I'm going.
In the vote, they can't, they can't-
They could, is that what you'd prefer that us talk about it in the book? Because then that language isn't there for somebody to go, okay, here is the final decision by the board, let's amend the contract and then present it.
Because that's a Wes question, but I always thought you could vote on it, but making an amendment to part of it.
Contracts are negotiations. And typically, in the past, the chair has met with myself, has met with Mrs. Matthews, and negotiated what the terms were going to be. Then the contract was presented to the board, and they've been approved. So if there's-
So I chose not to do that, because I've been asked to be very transparent. So I felt that when they, that they would need to provide the due diligence and provide the red lines for y'all to make that decision, not me, and then just present it, because that is how it's been done in the past. And I was uncomfortable with that process, but I was not in charge. So here we are. So I preferred getting your input now. To me, that's valuable, and then we now move forward. If you tell me, I want you to go back and renegotiate, as your chair, I'll be happy to do so. But I need some direction.
I agree with Ms. Fields. It's hard for me to swallow anybody getting a raise, if that's what we're talking about.
That's really what we're talking about.
How do you build that?
Unless we're gonna lose the employee, which is what's happening to our classroom. So, you know, it's a never-ending battle.
Yes, sir.
So this is a three-year contract, right?
Yes.
They're both. Sorry, go ahead.
So how do you build, I mean, like, is there a clause that can be added that ties it to increase for?
It's already doing that, it's already, that's already part of it, for both.
But it's tied to administrative increase, it's not tied to?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, just to alleviate Ms. Fortney and Ms. Fields' concerns about, is there a way to? I don't want her to never permanently get money, like, you know, if there's, if there's a raise that comes out of Talatia this year for everybody, then?
It's in the contract, is it?
Yes.
It will be subsequent to EEG, or it will be renewed.
Just tied to the administrator?
And whatever everybody else gets, that's what Wes and Carol Matthews will get. And Wes did not request an increase in his salary, because his salary is the same as it is currently.
Okay.
Just for context, everybody gets a raise essentially when Florida Department of Education provides its work funds. So not only does Wes and Carol, but also Mrs. Bird. So the last time we were providing raises, everyone got a raise collectively.
Thank you.
So what's the pleasure of the board?
I have another question, but I would need to move- Wes's contract now would renew for three years, but it no longer renews once that's been changed. So now, if the vote is taken next, the next meeting, it would go until June 2023.
Right, unless there's due cause for termination.
Well, we don't need, we don't have to have due cause anymore. So we can be terminated at any time.
Right, anytime, that's what I meant.
So, okay, so there's an ongoing escalator quality to it? That's just organic, depending on what everybody gets, like?
Right, right. Correct. Is that the part of the board? I don't know. Right now, we're only talking about Mrs. Matthews.
What's the pleasure of the board, I'm sorry, Mr.?
I'm sorry, what is the pleasure of the board regarding the increase? I mean, we have to talk about it here so that it can be prepared for next week. So I'm asking you, I've heard two comments, so.
I feel like I need more information.
You do?
Yes.
Okay, so how about this, then? Let me, let us, you want to do that now, or just email the individuals and try to figure this out? What's the best way?
Only because we've lost someone in that department. Like, I don't know, duties have changed, there's a lot of things I probably should need to ask.
Okay, all right. You all feel that way?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so shall we do this? Shall we, shall we ask that each one of you, would it be okay if they were to email you or meet with you directly and answer their questions? So then, maybe if, so that we can be able to vote next Tuesday evening and?
Yeah, I just, I didn't know it was an up-down vote. I thought it could be amended, so thank you for explaining that.
Yes, ma'am. So if you all could do that, that would be great. And then we could, I will talk with Susan, kind of find out where we stand at this point in time or with Carol, and see what we can negotiate after y'all have talked to her. So my question would be, can each of you, or my directive would be, if you'd be so kind, could you each contact Ms. Matthews by this Friday to get your questions answered? And then I will talk with Ms. Matthews about what will be presented to you on Tuesday based on the conversations here, if that seemed fair. And you'll be emailed that new contract. Does that work? Is everybody okay with that? So if you have any questions, reach out to her directly, and then we'll have a conversation, hopefully on Monday, and get this ready for Tuesday evening. Yes, sir, Mr. Wilson?
Well, if we're done with that, I don't want to interrupt. I had a question for Mr. Bridges.
Okay, we finish with Ms. Matthews? So any other, is that how we're going forward? Are you okay with that?
It's not gonna change my decision.
Okay.
So whatever it is, I'm not gonna vote for an increase. But yes, whatever.
Right, so everybody gets their-
My question's answered.
Perfect, okay. All right, Mr. Wilson, go ahead, now we're speaking.
We have received some audit criticisms related to those two contracts and that one provision.
Right.
And I just wanted to clarify that we're now in compliance with what the state recommends.
Correct, correct. The auditor had commented about the absence of a severance pay provision. And I'm not sure it was correct, because the statute doesn't say you have to have one.
Right.
But Mrs. Byrd has one, and this will conform the other two contracts to look similar to hers. And so it would answer that criticism.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Okay, any other comments? All right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes.
To go back to this. So when you say you are going to, after we have our questions answered about Ms. Matthews' contract, then a new contract will be presented?
That is correct.
And we'll have the same salary in it?
It may not. That will depend on Ms. Matthews.
Gotcha, all right. I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, okay, I didn't, whatever, I may want to do this or that. Then whatever that this or that may change to, then that's what will be presented.
I just wanted to clarify.
And then at that point, yeah, we decide how you want it going forward.
Gotcha.
Does that help?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Are we gonna have, I know you said we're talking to her by Friday. Are we gonna have a chance to discuss the work session before we get to the vote?
Yes, because on the agenda item, you know how we- Yes, because on the agenda item, you know how we go down the agenda item? Yeah, it's not gonna be a separate item for discussion. I, I, I don't think we need that, but I think when we do the agenda study, as part of that, I was gonna bring it up and see if there were any last-minute comments certainly, before we walk in. Yes, ma'am, of course, it's a great question. All right, anybody else? Okay, so now we go to, um, is that yours? Yeah. Right, what, no, you're, that's it, right? Taking care of our direct employees and the next thing would be any board comments? Would we like to go around, is everybody, okay, Ms. Fortney, go ahead.
I have just a couple of questions for future reference.
Yes, ma'am.
I put it on IRIS about the committee, uh, somebody is supposed to be asking Superintendent how she wants to proceed on naming the health clinic after Mary Ann Capazello. And I did put that on IRIS, I just wanted to make that out loud. What's the latest on the Emily Rogers climate survey?
That's a great question. I just spoke with her the other day and we talked about a time to come to give you all an update.
Okay.
So we're in the process now, we had our first session with the executive staff and what they did was the, uh, they did the DIS survey, which is their style. And so had a good robust conversation with that. We are at the point in our cabinet where we've had our three sixty. And, and we're meeting with cabinet members and, and Emily and doing those, going through those processes. So, um, talk to maybe, uh, if it's, you know, if the board would like perhaps, I would think, March or Superintendent, if Ms. Bird thinks it would be good, some time between March, April, or May to come and give y'all an update in a, in a session. But it's going very well.
Okay, I, I just hadn't heard anything.
Yes, ma'am, it's.
And we know I like to read the papers, so.
Yeah.
Speaking of which, Dr. Bernie, who is now one of our employees, yay, wrote a little piece on his experience at one of his schools. And I just want to leave just a little blurb right here. And it says, blah, 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 it's been years, by the end of the day, I was spent. That, this is what he, he wrote, I was spent. Uh, so as we move into the second semester, take a moment to express your appreciation to the teachers you know and while you're on the subject, please urge Florida's legislators to acknowledge the hard work teachers do every day and provide them all the resources they need to continue doing it. Thank you, teachers. Uh, I asked him if I could read that and he said yes. So I just wanted to say that. And, um, of course, there was a nice piece on Mr. Young from Lawberry, which I'll be getting that to him. I don't want to steal any thunder there. Uh, Wes, any update on share tables? These people keep hounding me, so, you know, I'm gonna keep hounding you, cause all is good.
I, I spoke with you at the principal's meeting. Uh, Jill Kazmier did a presentation about that. And with Superintendent's permission, I think it might be a good idea for you and I to sit down with her. She's got a good handle on what the public health ramifications of that are.
Okay.
And gives an idea. It, the, the, the bottom line is, it depends on what your local health department will allow.
Right.
So that's, that will be the.
Well, I can work on them too.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bridges.
That'll, that'll be the parameter.
Ms. Porteous, uh, I know we spoke briefly, but, um, you know, I looked, um, we looked at these absences or whatever, and we average how many absences a day for teachers approximately?
Based on the, the new data that has come out, probably around five hundred or so, especially for a Monday, Tuesday. Towards the weekend, it tends to, to tick upward because everyone loves a three-day weekend, so.
Right, right. So I would ask that you and your awesome department maybe kind of look at what incentives other folks do around the districts.
Other districts?
Yeah, and how they incentivize.
Encourage.
Yeah, 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 want, make people want to come to work to save those days.
So for absenteeism?
Yes, because I know.
Do you review this absenteeism?
Yes.
Okay.
Monetarily, it.
Particularly or specifically with teachers or just overall?
I would say overall.
Overall, yeah.
But, but the impact is in the classroom. Like, you know, and then the buses trying to get them there and people covering two routes. But, you know, and I, I hate to say this out loud, but this, back in the day, you had to call your principal. And that was a tough call to make.
Yeah, I'm sick.
You, you know.
Courtney, what are you saying?
I'm saying that it's no, it is, and I know it's convenient probably for principals or whatever, but now it's just like, oh yeah, I got a day, click. And that, that's worrisome to me and it builds on that stress factor and people are taking more and more because they're like, or, oh God, it's early release, I don't want to go for three hours. Or, you know, who knows what they're, you know? But I just would hope that y'all, that they have to be doing other things that maybe we can incorporate. That's, that's my, you know, and it all comes down to money, I would think.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Nobody's getting off the hook here today. Go ahead.
I just want, is our bus drivers the only category that we do the attendance bonus for?
Yes.
He's got a question.
Could it, does that work? Does that five hundred number include people who are like doing plant planning? I mean, is that five, five hundred need, need, needs for subs or is that five hundred absences?
Absences. So, um, generally the breakdown, just for full disclosure, we just recently started receiving the. And so in that first column is all the absences. And then the second column are those that were wired for subs. So it says needed subs. And then the third column, I think, are those that don't need subs. The fourth column is those that, um, have been filled with subs already. So that's kind of what that breakdown is.
Was your question like the TDAs and stuff like that?
Yeah, like, 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 like what's, what's, like, like what's, what's included in the average number?
So it would be anyone that has to report the absence to ASOPs. That's all instructional staff, your deans, your guidance counselors, anybody that's really school-based. Um, none of your professional, technical or district office staff really does ASOP.
Well, yeah, I mean, I would, I mean, to sort of pick up on, uh, perpetuate to do for a second. I mean, I think that idea of studying stuff, it would be interesting to go through, have a couple of absence date, like show us the view and, and so we can get a hold of, make sure we're all talking about the same thing.
Certainly.
So apart from that, thank you.
Ms. Usher, do we have lights yet at Lake Albert for our custodians? This is a, still.
If we can, Lake Albert.
Lake Albert Elementary.
Yes, we are hoping on that one.
Working on it.
It should be in place, I think, at the Albert, yes.
Well, as of last night, they were not on. But it was a holiday, that's why I told them, I said, so maybe we have it on a timer. I'm like, okay. Uh, and then, let's see, Mr. Davis, uh, Achievement Academy.
Yes, ma'am.
So I, I am so confused, they're one of the ones that, that we're not gonna help with transportation. Can you give me a?
Ms. Fortney, I'm adding an agenda item to the next work session.
Never mind, all right, moving on.
Ms. Perron, you're on deck.
Yeah. And then I've met with a couple different places about the Envo. And this is, I've, I've heard that, how's our learning curve coming from?
For who, staff, students?
Envo.
Or both?
Well, I mean.
I've heard behavioral versus, I mean, educational versus ther- therapeutic type services. There's been a big learning curve and Envo is having a hard time staffing folks, et cetera. Just on a.
I mean, they're fully staffed as far as I know.
And there, and there's like a, you know, one school had like five RBTs or I don't know. It, it just, people struggling.
There's a plethora of reasons why some of those staff change.
Uh huh.
That we, I mean, and it's conditional on each one. But I know that they're quick to fill the position if somebody happens to leave for whatever reason. And most of the ones that have left have left on their own accord. There's been a couple that we've had to request they remove. But, oh, there's a, there's a large learning curve for their staff who come from therapeutic hospitalized types of settings into classrooms to learn the education setting and how that works. Just like some of our staff are honestly struggling with how to understand how to implement behavior strategies and things that they're not accustomed to doing. So, um, I know that one of the things that Mr. Maxwell focuses on a lot with the Envo team and the school staff and the administrators is merging those relationships and how that works and the communication and things. But at the end of the day, I know that all of the students that are in the units are showing improvement for the most part. I mean, there's a couple that are still.
I, I just kind of know from experience that that consistency piece is so important with that population.
It is. I'd venture to say we almost have more turnover without them in those classrooms with our, when we're trying to have staff in them than we would with them there. They wouldn't be surviving if we didn't have them in there.
Gotcha, thank you. I'm done.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Knowles?
I just, um, I need, I would like to add an agenda item for the next work session in regards to Achievement Academy and the students that we get from that school. I don't know what the requirement is at this time for you, Mrs. Chairperson.
So Achievement Academy?
Right.
All right. Add a work session.
I'm sure, I needed to read something out loud publicly too when you, when I get another chance, I forgot.
Okay. One, times anything else? No, okay, why don't you go ahead and do that?
I've had numerous emails and I've been in touch with Mr. Hill about the state statute, the mental health days that we have to teach and we have concerned teachers, rightly so. I would feel the same way, uh, especially in the situations that I've blessed y'all hearing numerous times. I am not a professional, but, uh, I just, this came from our staff and it was explained very well and I just want to explain this to everybody. We do not have a formal opt-out option for students. The state decides which required topics are allowed to have opt-out. For example, the state requires opt-outs for human reproductive education and does not allow an opt-out for these mental health lessons. That said, if a parent thinks their child would be negatively affected by the content, they do have the option of keeping them home. They must send a note, this is my mistake. They must send a note explaining that they kept their child out of the lesson because of the content and the absence will be excused. FYI.
Where did that come from?
What, what a delivery of mental health.
Was that a, a D U A?
I'll show it to you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney.
Yes.
Mrs. Sunny Camp, can I correct something?
Yes, ma'am.
Reynolds asked if, and bus drivers were the only ones to receive an absence incentive. That is not correct. Also, school nutrition as well. They are tied to, um, they receive a bonus that's once a year, that's tied directly to perfect attendance.
Okay, great, thank you for the update, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
It's great. Okay, anybody else? Yes, sir.
I'm Chair, I have two very brief things. Number one, um, Florida law two eighty-six oh one-one allows the board to meet privately with counsel to discuss litigation strategy, settlement negotiations, cases that are currently in, in, in litigation. It has to be announced at a public meeting and, and that, and that session is held during a subsequent public meeting. I, I need to meet with you for that purpose. It would require me to put a notice in the newspaper, have a court reporter and all that. My question is, would it be good to do that, um, next Tuesday? Or are we so, so slammed that I need to put it off until the eleventh?
It's a good question. We have not yet met on the agenda for next week, so I'm not sure. What do you think?
Prefer to do it next week if possible.
You prefer, I'll get with you.
Okay.
Can I get with you? I'll, I'll register and then, so let's get out of here.
Yes, ma'am, okay. And, 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 and so I've announced it, we'll, we'll handle the advertisement and set that up. The second thing I wanted to, to touch briefly on, you'll recall that two years ago, uh, nine districts, including Polk, were involved in a, in a constitutional challenge to House Bill seventy-sixty-nine. And, um, Mr. Townsend has been good enough to keep, to keep us all apprised of the, of the progress of that case. And you will recall that, that the challenge was unsuccessful in Circuit Court and in the first district. There had been a pair of, of what we call extraordinary writs, uh, where, where the plaintiffs, that's the districts, were hoping to go into the, into the Circuit Court and see if we could get a, a, what they call a, a writ of, quote, wanto or a writ of mandamus, finding that the, the legislature had exceeded its authority and, and what they had done. We've reached a point in that litigation where it appears that we, we were at a point of diminishing returns. And the, uh, most of the other districts have, have withdrawn their petition. Um, I think Elatua and Polk are the only two remaining. My suggestion to you is that if we, if we continue, we'll be all by ourselves. And there, at this point, the, you know, you make, you make money betting on the weather betting that tomorrow will be just like today. Given the standards of review, the recommendation of our counsel has been that we join the other districts in withdrawing the petition and putting an end to that litigation. There would be no further costs, uh, uh, each side would bear their own attorney fees. If you have no objections to that, then I will, I will let them know. Otherwise, we can have a, a further conversation at the attorney-client session.
What's the pleasure of the board? Does anyone, um, I, I, and comments, please?
I, I was fine with the trial.
Everybody's okay?
Yes, his recommendation.
It's been going on for two years, they've done the best they could.
Okay.
But if, if you're good with that, I'll let them know.
It's, it's usefully clarifying.
Yes.
I, um, I mean, I think, I think we ought to have a, a real serious discussion about the implications of it because they are enormous. I mean, they largely eviscerate us. I mean, they make us symbolic and I think that's not a joke.
Sure. Okay, so while the discussion was being had, um, Ms. Bird said that they checked the agenda for next week, January the twenty-eighth, and that the attorney-client session could be scheduled at that time.
During the work session, very good.
Does that work for you then?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, and thank you, Superintendent. I'll take care of the notice.
Thank you. Okay.
Is that going to be here? Did you decide or are we moving the work session as well?
I think we're moving, we normally move everything to another location. So they need, we need, okay, to, to finish now so they can go do all this. Okay, so real quick, um, anybody else? And then I'll do my quick report. Um, I just want to publicly thank Mr. Perron. I'm glad you stayed for just a minute. It was quite an ordeal on the phone the other day, um, working with, um, the attorneys and our investment advisors and Citibank, um, to do our cop swap. And, uh, I made some notes on my home napkins as I was talking to them, but the bottom line, which I did ask, for Mr. Perron to be certain that before we did this, you knew about it. So you received an email the previous week alerting you that we were getting ready to do the cop swap now. Cause under Mr. Wilson's leadership, we gave authority for them to move forward. But that was back in September and I felt like you needed to know what was going on. So after you all pretty much said it's okay, um, we came in, I signed documents and then a few days later, we actually went through with the process and actually did it and was able to save the district one point seven percent or one point two million dollars. Yeah, so really kind of exciting. And so I just wanted to publicly thank you for your time, your effort, your diligence to eliminate that financial situation with our district and be able to over time certainly save us that kind of money. So we thank you for that, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, sir. Okay, in addition to that, um, at the last meeting, I passed out what was called Board Member Discussion Items. And I think Sarah Beth felt bad because her name wasn't on there. So I kind of need to say the reason why, cause.
Yeah, and submitted, I think.
So no, so I just wanted to be sure people don't think we arbitrarily just ignored you, cause we didn't. So just want to pass out a new form. It has her name on there and whenever she's ready, she'll submit some items that she would like for us to discuss. My second item that I bring before you today is for, um, our Center Florida Public School Boards Coalition. When I passed out the sheets after that board meeting, the following day or two, um, I received an email and Ms. Fields is unable to serve in that capacity for us. So I'm coming before you to ask if there's somebody who would like to assume that. who would like to assume that liaison to the Central Florida Public School Boards Coalition, do we have someone that can do that?
What's the commitment to that, I don't?
It's once a month.
No eye contact.
In Orlando. What'd you say?
No eye contact.
No eye contact, no, no, no.
Third Monday?
Yeah.
Mondays are hard. I think I'm already on two things, aren't I?
You may be, yes, or does somebody, if you'll be so kind, um, you each have the committee list, because I passed them out. Um, if you can look through them, and if there's something that maybe one of you would want to give up, in order to do that, maybe Ms. Fields would be willing to switch and help, so everybody's got an assignment for this coming year, so.
What time of day is it on Monday?
It's nine, nine o'clock, nine to eleven.
Oh, nine to eleven.
Is there anybody to dial into it?
Can you conference in it?
Yeah, it's really, y'all, and it could be sent in an email half the time, I feel like, just FYI, okay, whatever.
Think about it?
Okay, yeah.
If everybody think about it, and maybe next week, we can check quickly and see if, what y'all think, so I appreciate you doing that. Okay, and one other item, we did change our master board, well, we canceled master board training for today in order to, um, have our special work session, and, um, I just want to say thank you to each of you for being willing. I know we had to try to rearrange it a couple of times, but I just want to say thank you, I appreciated that. Um, in doing so, um, we got some information from FSBA, um, I felt that we notified them um, on Wednesday, that the following Tuesday, which is today, which is a seven-day notice, that we were going to be canceling the master board training, and we received a nice email telling us that uh, we were going to have to pay for the hotel, um, hundred and eighteen dollars, and that really upset me, because I feel like in seven days' time, anybody can rebook that hotel room, so, um, it's the principle, it's not, it's the money, but it's more to me of the principle. So Susan reached out, and they're pretty firm about the hundred and eighteen dollars, so I'm coming before the board to find out what you want me to do, I either have to pay it or do something else, so.
No, I'll write them a check.
You'll write them a check? You're awesome, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Okay, full disclosure.
Sarah will not write a check.
Oh, yeah, what?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so, um.
Can you email us the commitment to FSBA for those sessions that?
Yeah.
I don't know that we're that.
Can we end them?
I wasn't impressed with them at all, um, I think we could all sit around the table and do better, but, um, I don't know what we've committed to already. Because it's a, it's almost a five thousand dollar commitment.
Let's, let's.
Let's, let's look at that, I don't have that today, but that's a great idea, let's bring that up at another work session, and we can make some decisions. Well, that just irritated me, that, I mean, anybody else you work with, if you give them, I could see if I called them Monday and said, forget Tuesday, but when you give them seven days' notice, I mean, seriously, so, um, okay, let's do a work, we'll have a work session item.
They'll appreciate Mr. Townsend's check.
Okay, all right, that concludes everything, and we'll be looking for a venue for next week, and thank you very much, and this work session is adjourned, have a blessed day.